Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Monday, November 7th, 2022 work session to order. Glad you all are joining us remotely. This is a work session, not a formal council meeting. So, but we are televised and we'd like to welcome all of you who join us that way. Also like to welcome my colleague, Councilmember Courtney Banks-McLaughlin back. Good to see you, ma'am. Thoughts and prayers to continue to be with you. Speaking of prayer, I would please stand at this time. I asked Councilmember Thompson if he would give us our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord. We thank you for another day and another opportunity that we can lift you up and magnify your holy name, dear Lord. I pray that you would manifest yourself in this place, Heavenly Father. Move from heart to heart, from soul to soul, from room to room, and let everything be done, be done according to your will. I pray that you bless this council, that you bless this city, that you bless this state, and you bless this country. Let everything be done in your will. Here we are, Heavenly Father, your humble and faithful servants. Use us to do your will. We ask these things in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Council, at this time, as we move to the approval of the agenda, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right. It's motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hondros. And discussion on the motion to approve the agenda. All right, council, all those in favor, show of hands, and we'll, we'll try to check iPads a little later. All right, motion carries. Madam Clerk, unanimous by those voting. Item 4.01, Stormwater Program Overview. Good evening, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. They didn't have an announcement out here. Just before you present, sir, real quick, I think Councilmember here had an announcement under the, what would normally be the announcement? Portia.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanting to, I don't know if I want to say inform or alert, but just make all the citizens aware that tomorrow's a great opportunity for everyone to exercise their right to vote all across Cumberland County, all across the city. Tomorrow, November the 8th, the polls open up at 6:30 a.m. and they close at 7:30 p.m. And we're asking everyone, please, 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 to go out. We have a number of items on the ballot that need special attention to Cumberland County and to Fayetteville. We also asking everyone to please be safe as they go about voting tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say to each of my colleagues, thank you for your support. To the community, I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We love you, baby.
Well, Mr. Manager, you had something?
If we could, if Jeff Yates could stand, just wanted to introduce him to the City Council. He's our newest Assistant City Manager. We sent the information out last week. We look for a time when we'll be able to actually have him meet individually with all of you as well. And if y'all could, just welcome him to our team.
Good evening, sir. Welcome to the team. All right. Well, thank you and welcome, sir. We, we'll be on our best behavior tonight. We don't want to run you off or anything. All right, moving to Councilmember Benevente.
I do have a motion I'd like to make before we proceed with the agenda, to move into closed session as it relates to the Dunn Lab, attorney-client privilege relates to the Dunn Lab situation.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, second by Councilmember Ingram, to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege.
So I think, Mayor, you first need to have a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, so council, can you draw that motion, sir?
I do, Mayor.
All right, so can you do a subsequent motion to amend the agenda to include closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If I can go ahead and make a motion to amend the agenda so that we can move into closed session to entertain attorney-client privilege relates to the Dunn Lab situation.
All right. The second about Councilmember Ingram? All right. So it's a motion to amend the agenda and to go into closed session to attorney-client privilege as, as stated. Any discussion? All right, council, those in favor, show of hands. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Those voting, okay, and we can, do we have the second step to that? All right, if we can ask non-essential personnel related to that matter to give
All right, Council, we're back in open session. Item, as everyone comes back in, we'll return to item 4.01, Stormwater Program Overview. I see Ms. Ambet and her team are in, making their way to the podium.
Yeah.
is, the history of the stormwater program here with the city, briefly touch on our stormwater management ordinance, discuss briefly funding and our budget breakdown, our organizational structure, the city assets, then our quality program, our quantity program, and then other initiatives and the future of the program. So, what is stormwater? Stormwater is rainwater that falls on roadways, parking lots, and buildings that run off of the surfaces into our rivers, lakes, and streams. It can become heavily polluted as it runs over streets and parking lots, picking up pollutants such as litter, motor, oil, and fertilizer. As far as the state and EPA are concerned, stormwater is a quality program, it's not quantity, it is a quality program. So, a little bit of the history of the stormwater program. The federal government Clean Water Act in 1972, there was the Water Quality Act of 1987 that defines stormwater, and then you have the MPDS program rules for stormwater finalized in 1990. The Environmental Protection Agency authorized the state to enforce the program, that is through the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. MPDS permit was issued by DEQ in 95 to the city and the county. A stormwater fee began being collected in 95. Initially, this was to address water quality. Quantity was addressed via the ordinance revisions in 2009, and the current permit was issued in October of 18, and next year, we'll be renewing our permit. Permit cycles for five years. If you look at our stormwater management ordinance, it's broken down into three different articles. Article one is defined as in general. This has the establishment of the Stormwater Management Utility and Enterprise Fund. It establishes the boundaries and jurisdiction, the limits of responsibility, and the drainage assistance program. Article two is the illicit connections and improper disposal. This is water quality of discharges to waters of the state. It involves illicit connections and improper disposal. And then Article three is stormwater control, which we would call our development ordinance, that has our development standards and our post-construction measures. When you look at funding and a budget breakdown, we get our revenues from a stormwater fee. There are three different types of property descriptions in Fayetteville. You have residential, non-residential, and undeveloped. Undeveloped, you don't have any fee. Residential is $72 per year, so it's $6 a month. Non-residential is $72 per ERU per year, and an ERU is an equivalent residential unit, which is around 2,266 square foot. So, we won't go through line by line of the math on the right, but just have a commercial property example that shows you have a specific amount of square footage of impervious area, gets you about 90 ERUs at $72 an ERU. This commercial property would pay a little over $6,400 per year in their stormwater fee. If you look at the difference between non-residential and residential, your residential properties make up 93% of the parcels in the city. If you look at the impervious square footage, your residential makes up about 40% of the square footage of impervious surface, your non-residential makes up about 60%. If you look at the approximate fee generated, it's almost in line with the impervious square footage. So, your non-residentials pay about 60% of the fee, your residential's pay around 41%. Looking at the stormwater fee, from a monthly standpoint, again, it's $72 a year, which is $6 a month. We'll trace it back to 2013, you'll see it was $3.50. You had a slight increase in FY 20, or excuse me, FY 16 of 25 cent. You then increased it again in FY 18 for 75 cent. You had a large increase of a $1.75 increase in FY 19, but you'll see we've kind of plateaued. There's been no stormwater rate increase in the past four fiscal years. So, when you look at that large $1.75 increase, what was the catalyst for action? It would have been all the hurricanes that we had, and the need for us to study widespread flooding issues throughout the city. Council direction at that time in 2018 was to accelerate Stormwater CIP program through our watershed studies. That is a data-driven approach to determine the needs of the city. You'll see, from time to time, we have come to you and presented the findings from those watershed studies, and they're still continuing now. This was to grow a sustainable proactive program to evaluate stormwater needs before problems arise. We also wanted to protect vulnerable parts of the city from persistent flooding issues. And so, based on a preliminary rate study, council approved the $1.75 monthly increase to accelerate the CIP program through those watershed studies, and to eventually jumpstart our capital program. When you look at the total revenues that the city gets, we get about approximately $11.5 million through our stormwater fees, stormwater services, and then a street sweeping agreement with NC DOT. If you look at the expenditures for operations, it's almost $6 million a year, and these can range from salaries, supplies and materials, vehicle maintenance, a long list of different operation needs that we have. There's also about $1 million in debt services that we pay, and then a capital cost, usually around $4.5 million for vehicles and equipment, and our capital project, drainage assistance program, and watershed studies. If you look at your budget books for FY '23, you'll see it was $9.5 million. That was due to the influx of ARPA funds that we received from the Division of Water Infrastructure through the state. So, in fiscal year '23, the stormwater fund expenditures are projected to exceed the revenues by almost $5 million, so that required the use of stormwater fund balance. The use of the accumulated fund balance is due to the increased transfer to the stormwater capital project fund in fiscal year '23. If you look at the organizational structure of the stormwater program, stormwater pays for approximately 53 positions. 2.2 are admin staff. You have 32.7 positions that are right-of-way infrastructure maintenance, .2 for traffic, 4 for your engineering plan review, 1 in real estate, the director makes up .4, and then stormwater and watershed maintenance is 13. So, I'll just kind of dial in on those 13. You've got a stormwater manager, a stormwater inspection supervisor, 3 stormwater inspectors, a stormwater educator, you have 2 for watershed maintenance, 2 that address the drainage assistance program, and then you only have 3 employees that are addressing capital projects. Now, I'm going to transition to assets. The city's only responsible for maintaining things located within the city's right-of-way or within city-owned drainage easements. If you look at streams and open conveyances throughout the city, there's around 307 miles of streams and open conveyances. Excuse me, the city is responsible for about 20 miles of that. If you look at stormwater pipes and culverts, there's about 423 miles of these. The city is responsible for around 243 miles of those. Again, stormwater network structure, these are your inlets, your catch basins, manholes, headwalls. And there's about almost 27,000 of these. The city's responsible for over 17,000 of these structures. And then also have dams and bridges in here as well. Within the city, there's 51 total dams, 6 are city-owned and maintained, bridges there are 32, 19 of which are city-owned and maintained. Transitioning to what the stormwater program, let's break it into two different things. You've got your quality program and your quantity program. So, I'll briefly touch on these. Your quality program consists of your MPDS permit, we do have beavers, and I'll briefly touch on the audit that we went through in September. Our quantity program consists of our watershed studies, our capital improvement program, and our drainage assistance program. If you look at our MPDS permit, we are tasked with 6 minimum measurable criterias. I'll briefly touch on these, I could probably give a 30-minute presentation on each of these, but it's public education, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff, post-construction controls, and municipal good housekeeping. Again, I'll touch on the audit. The Department of Environmental Quality conducted an audit of the city's MS4 program. The audit was conducted back in September 20, 21st and 22nd. I want to thank the mayor and Councilman Honduras, in his capacity as the chairman of the Stormwater Committee, for participating in the audit. We did receive a notice of compliance on September 30th, and so currently, we will be pursuing our permit renewal in 2023. We also have a beaver contract of about $30,000 a year with the United States Department of Agriculture. This includes the removals of beavers, nutria, muskrats, and any dams associated with each. The removal helps prevent flooding issues, property damage, and health and safety issues, and we just have a few pictures of a couple of beaver dams. I'm going to transition to the water quantity aspect of the program. Quantity portion is a city council initiative to address the needs of our growing community by maintaining and improving city infrastructure and identifying ways to build a more resilient community. We do this through our watershed studies. Again, council direction in FY '29 authorized the fee increase and directed staff to accelerate the watershed study program and related capital projects. This was to help reduce localized minor flooding and improve our resiliency to major flooding. Major issues that we looked at through the watershed study and are currently looking at are flooded roads, essential facilities such as police, fire, nursing homes, things like that, disconnected structures or single-access neighborhoods, impacted structures, and then traverse road crossings. The process for studying the watersheds, you define a minimum level of service for assets and locations. You prioritize the areas that do not meet those levels of services. We then develop potential solutions for prioritized areas. We determine the efficacy of the solutions to fix the level of service issues, so what are you proposing, how well does it address the problem? We then prioritize and propose potential projects based on budget and resources. As council knows, last December, we presented the first tranche of projects. We then presented Lox Creek earlier this summer, and then a large project along Blunts Creek this summer as well. They all were stemmed from the watershed studies. Again, developing, excuse me, developing the potential solutions, you know, based on city recommendations. We develop these proposed solutions and provide very informative exhibits to help visualize how well the solution works. So, here's an example of an inundation map of existing condition and then proposed conditions. You've probably recognized these from some of the presentations we have given in the Example council overview, so this is for the Little Cross Creek watershed study, so this is just more for representative. You know, for this one, we had 69 total sub-basins, 20 priority sub-basins. The study identified 83 concern areas, 37 of which were selected for proposed solutions, and out of that, 41 proposed solutions were developed. We also have the miles of impacted lane length, all of these solutions would mitigate if they were implemented, as well as the number of traverse road crossings identified that would be resolved if the projects were implemented, as well as the number of disconnected structures and impacted structures. And just for reference, this one, we had about $58 million in proposed solutions, so about $58 million worth of potential projects. So, looking at the watershed studies overall, we have basins nearing completion. These are Rockfish Creek, Cape Fear 2, Little Cross Creek, and Beaver Creek 3, all of which have been presented to council before. They're also currently finishing up Blunts Creek, which will be presented to council the first of the year. Just with these 3, or excuse me, just with these 5 watersheds, we have almost half a billion dollars in identified proposed solutions. Basin studies currently underway include Cross Creek, Little Rockfish Creek 1, Beaver Creek 2, Bones Creek, Carvers Creek, and Buckhead Creek. And then in the coming years, we'll study Little Cross, excuse me, Little Rockfish Creek, Stewart's Creek, Beaver Creek 1, and Cape Fear 1. Looking at our stormwater CIP, these are large projects to reduce flooding within city right-of-way. Going back to 2011, this shows you the value of completed stormwater projects that we've done each year. If you look at 2022, we've completed one, a little over $1 million, but I anticipate about $3.8 million with the projects being completed before the end of this year. So, those are the ones that are nearing completion now. You'll see, since 2016, we've completed almost $36 million in stormwater projects. Currently, our stormwater CIP consists of the projects listed to the left. You'll see the ones I have highlighted in yellow are receiving all or some funding from grants, whether that's ARPA funding, FEMA HNGP funding, or Hurricane Matthew recovery funds through FEMA. So, you'll see, in total, we have $70 million in projects currently under construction or design, and almost 60% of these projects are leveraging grant funds, so we're trying to pursue all funding avenues that we can to build as much as we can. Just to give a couple of examples, this is Spruce Street Phase 3. This was a, increasing a culvert under Spruce Street. I use this project as an example a lot. This is the one where the child was, got sucked in and died about 15 or so years ago, so this culvert was upsized. This was completed earlier this year. This is another example of a project that has been recently completed. This was an emergency watershed protection funded project for bank stabilization and debris removal. This is not typically a project that would be funded with stormwater enterprise funds, however, we received a grant that was, that funded this entire project from both the state and federal levels. This is behind the old flea market on Bragg Boulevard, or the old Kmart on Bragg Boulevard, which is now a flea market. So, you'll see, there was a lot of debris and erosion taking place, and it's causing some impacts downstream in the Evans Lake area. You'll see, we set a new headwall structures, gabion baskets, and then the final product on the right. As far as our stormwater CIP, we do have a website, it's down at the bottom. It provides an interactive map where you can click on any of the dots that show you proposed projects, completed projects. We also provide upper management and council with biweekly project updates, so every other week, you get an update on all of those projects that we had listed. Transition now to the drainage assistance program. This sets forth the criterion circumstance by which stormwater enterprise funds may be used for drainage assistance projects that are located out of city on right-of-way and located on private property. Citizens can apply for inclusion in the program. Stormwater staff then evaluates each service request, and if eligibility criteria are met, projects are presented to the Stormwater Advisory Board for approval. So, just to break down what eligible sites are, they have to be single-family residential property. The fix must serve a public purpose. The repair includes subsurface drainage infrastructure, and the owner authorizes the work and acknowledges the city will not take ownership. Here's an example of before and after of a failed headwall and the finished product on site. Non-eligible sites are commercial sites, also sites that would not serve a public purpose. Also, we do not do sediment removal from swales and ditches. We do not do landscaping or aesthetic maintenance, and we do not address groundwater. So, I have 2 pictures, an example of vegetative maintenance that we would not do, and groundwater that we would not address. I'm going to run through just a few projects. So, this is an eligible project. You'll see the image shows the bottom of the corrugated metal pipe that's rusted out. Demolition, or excuse me, demolition found this throughout, we videoed it, and it was found throughout the length of the pipe. This image here was also provided by the property owner that shows flooding around his home. This occurred probably during Matthew Florence. You'll see, we come up with a schematic plan profile design to fix, address the problem. And then just some photos of construction, installing new aluminum arch pipe. We added a couple additional catch basins in the yard to address some of that yard flooding, constructed a new headwall. You'll see the new flumen headwall, new drop inlet in the front yard, and sod was utilized to stabilize the area. So, this is the after photos. An additional project I'll show you, the curb inlet at the roadway, and here's a curb inlet at the roadway, and sinkholes along the pipe alignment are identified by the red circles. You can see a 4-foot probing rod was easily pushed at least 30 inches into the ground on top of the pipe, so the pipe was failing. We removed the concrete pipe and installed new HDPE pipe with stone bedding. We connected it to the existing open throat inlet in the rear of the property, added a new drop inlet, repaired the open throat inlet, and again, sod was installed over the pipe alignment to stabilize the area. So, little drainage assistance program in action. The drainage assistance program has assisted many property owners with infrastructure repairs that they were physically or financially unable to undertake. In instances where the drainage issues did not meet the eligibility criteria of the program, staff made recommendations as to corrective actions that can be taken to resolve the issue. Many citizens have expressed their gratitude and appreciation for the level of service and quality of work provided by staff, and in an effort to be good stewards of taxpayer funds and maximize the level of service, when possible, these projects are designed and constructed by city staff. And then staff will be presenting a tranche of projects to the Stormwater Advisory Board in December. Again, we've got a drainage assistance program website. We also have a DAT brochure that provides citizens with information about the program, stormwater do's and don'ts, and how to apply for the program. Now, I'll kind of touch on some current and future initiatives of the program. Our new MPDS permit and do-outs from our audit are a major item that we're working on. We're also actively managing the $70 million in active council-approved projects. We'll also be adding 3 positions to manage project delivery schedule and build internal capacity for the existing workload that we currently have. We will also, in a couple of weeks, be applying for a FEMA BRIC 2022 funding cycle grant for the person in Russell Street Bridge Replacements and Stream Enhancements. That project is valued over $20 million. Now I'll kind of touch on some current and future initiatives of the program. Our new MPDS permit and do-outs from our audit are a major item that we're working on. We're also actively managing the seventy million dollars in active council-approved projects. We'll also be adding three positions to manage project delivery schedule and build internal capacity for the existing workload that we currently have. We will also, in a couple of weeks, be applying for a FEMA BRIC 2022 Funding Cycle Grant for the person in Russell Street Bridge Replacements and Stream Enhancements. That project is valued over twenty million dollars, so we'll be seeking federal funding to help offset some of those costs. We're also actively pursuing other infrastructure investment and jobs acts. We're pursuing all sorts of grants, additional ARPA funds from the state. We're applied, we've applied for a Golden Leaf Grant as well, so we're pursuing all alternative sources of funding that we can to help supplement the program. These four that I have in yellow, I'll go a little more detail, but there are our flood awareness campaign, our gauge installations and flood warning, the Roses Lake feasibility study, and then our impervious area analysis and tiered stormwater rate structure. So here's a website that we have that, that shows flood awareness for our citizens. So this is a resource that citizens could use. They can go to if they're new or if they've lived in the city. We have an interactive map where we show areas that are prone to flood. We also provide tips, kind of, you know, turn around, don't drown, other useful items for flood awareness. We have been advertising this in print and social and on the radio, so you may have heard some of the ads. This is a good tool and resource for our community to utilize. We then also have USGS stream and precipitation gauges. There are three stream gauges at Blunts Creek, Cross Creek, and at the Cape Fear River. We also have some precipitation gauges, and these monitor rainfall amount and intensity, and they allow us to understand how rain events affect stream flow, as well as giving us an idea of conditions in different parts of the city. The gauges help staff understand how a storm's rainfall intensity affects the stream flow. For example, if it's a short but high rainfall rain, a high-intensity storm, we will be able to see how quickly the stream responds and rises versus storms that last longer and allow for a slower stream rise over time. This also helps us validate some of our models when we're doing design work. This information is also updated into the state's FAMEN website. So this, if you look here, here's a gauge kind of behind the ball field. You can click on this gauge at any time and see the stage. If there's a rain event, you can click on here and see how the creek, or how the stream rises and falls. And so a lot of good information here, and you can, you can look at gauges all over the state at this website. Next is the Roses Lake feasibility study. This was identified in the citywide stormwater storage screen report as having the potential to increase available flood storage. The original spillway was breached back in nineteen eighty-eight here, and it was breached permanently, permanently in the year two thousand, but through that citywide stormwater storage screening report, it did show some potential to attenuate stormwater, where you may mitigate some downstream flooding that may extend to the downtown area. The feasibility study is currently underway. There's a lot of environmental impairment considerations that are being evaluated. We'll also plan on having community outreach that's planned shortly after we get the feasibility study back. Next is the impervious area analysis and tiered stormwater rate structure. So I kind of delineate these between two different things, but your impervious area analysis looks at current parcel data against the backdrop of the city's most recent ortho imagery. It measures the impervious surface area on each property in the city's service area. So you get an accurate account of what each individual parcel has as far as impervious surfaces, so that they can accurately be assessed the stormwater fee. You then have a tiered stormwater rate structure, which looks at a more equitable rate structure alternatives. This is more of an industry standard than our current flat rate of six dollars a month. All other Phase One communities in North Carolina implement a tiered rate structure. So Charlotte, Raleigh, Winston-Salem, Durham, Greensboro, they all have a tiered rate structure. Now those tiers may vary from three tiers, four tiers, five tiers, but all of the Phase One communities, which we're a Phase One community, have a tiered rate structure. This was also a unanimous recommendation from the stormwater advisory board to evaluate. And just to show you as an example, this is the, the tiered rates for the city of Raleigh. So you'll see for residential, the, you know, right now, if you live in a three-thousand-square-foot house, a detached garage with a large driveway, you're paying the same stormwater rate as you are if you live in a nine-hundred-square-foot house. So it's not, you're paying the same amount. So this is a little more equitable. You kind of, the more impervious surface you have as a residential owner, the more you pay in your stormwater fee. With that, I'll take any questions.
Yes, sir. We have Councilmember here, and then Jensen, and then Hondros.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for good report. I was waiting on this report. I'm, this is not so much a disappointment with certain requests that come in for stormwater assistance from our citizens, but I do have a big issue. Now, we say that stormwater is a runoff that can be very heavily polluted, and it can move earth, erosion, rocks, on and on and on and on, and it can clog up areas. Then we say that we have an assistant program for the citizens that if the citizen would relinquish the city and also relinquish responsibility, and that the city does not take ownership of helping do the repairs on that storm drainage area, that we can help them if it passes the guideline to receive help. Now, I was a part of the stormwater system when Mayor Pro Tim was the committee chair, and I brought a particular item, which many others have had those kind of items, and if my phone worked well tonight, if you look in your phone, councilmembers, you will see the pictures if it sent through. Sometimes if it's, they're too large, it may not have. But I did send it to every councilmember tonight since I've, since we've been in. And what I'm going to be asking for a consensus on is this. When citizens have an issue and the rocks and the stones and the erosion is so huge, even though it's in their yard, even though it's a pipe that runs from the street storm water or drainage all the way through their yard, and after we have those heavy floods over the year, all of these stones and other erosion, a person cannot go out and move it. You know, they can't do it with a shovel and a pick and a rake. You're going to have to have a small bobcat or some type of heavy equipment to come out there and do that. But then we say we have an assistance program for citizens, but the citizens can seem to never pass the bar to get it done. I think we had about a million-five or more in that emergency assistance program some years ago. We end up taking the majority of that money, or a large piece of that money, and use it somewhere else, because none of the complaints that councilmembers were sending in from their residents could ever meet the guideline. And we must do better with council in tweaking these policies, which I'm a part of the stormwater, to help the citizens. It's their money. You see what I'm saying? I'm, I'm just, I'm frustrated with it, because I've been talking about one particular area for three years, and it's still back there. But if you don't get it moved or cleaned out, then the citizens receive some form of a letter in the mail. So we got to do better with that, and I hope that I can, some gain some support of consensus to, to repair this storm drainage area over the off of Metz Road with the pictures that I've sent to you tonight. I can give you the exact address and everything. I don't have it right with me, but you should be able to get the pictures if my phone operated properly. You all should be able to look at them tonight. And I have already gone out onsite with this particular one, I know it's many, many others, with our stormwater committee. I would like to think I had support, but you never know sometimes. But we got to help, we got to do better for the citizens. It's no use of them coming to us, and we can't help them, but we hurt them with fine letters. And they can't go out there and move it, especially if they're seniors, but not even young folk, and go out there and move this type of debris and heavy stones and boulders. You know the kind of stuff that they put down in there to get any, so that's where my cry is, and that's where my plea is, plea is again tonight. And I, hopefully, after we have a discussion, if there's a discussion, it's my prayer that we can get some consensus for this particular item. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilmember here. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I want to thank you for the presentation, and I think that we have come a long way in stormwater, and I want to commend you for getting all these grants. I mean, sixty percent of what we're spending is in grant. That is, that's tremendous. So of course, I've been sitting in the chair quite a long time, right here beside the mayor, and, you know, I remember when we started the stormwater fees that were going up. So I'm going to take a little different avenue on this. I do agree that we do need to help our citizens, and we need to get, you know, water is the most powerful element out there, and we're never going to win with water. You're never going to win. But I'm looking at the tiered stormwater rate structure. So, and I do not even, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot when I ask this question, and I remember hearing it, but I can't remember what the exact numbers were. What percentage of what we get in stormwater is commercial? Does anybody have that number?
Yeah, I think I had an approximation on here.
And I, and if I did not see that or did not hear that, I apologize.
It was, I think, a sixty-forty split.
Is, I'm sorry, I must have missed that. Well, I thought sixty percent was the grants. Maybe that's where I got confused.
It was, well, fifty-eight percent.
Fifty, okay, so I, I did hear it. I just wanted to make sure I was right. So fifty-eight percent of the money that comes in for stormwater comes from commercial properties. Now, commercial properties, if they have an issue, there's no help. So when we sit here and say it's only two dollars a month, when that gets raised, and especially if, you know, if you do the tier, I understand the tier part, and I, and I understand exactly what you're saying. But the issue is, if you own a business, you own, you know, a place on Rayford Road or somewhere, yours can go up, you could be paying five, six hundred dollars a year on an average commercial property. You're going to be paying around anywhere from three hundred to six hundred dollars a year. And if you have a problem, we say, sorry. So every time we raise it, we're, you know, think about the mall, think about Home Depot, think about all these places. And what we're basically saying is, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do. I see an issue with that, especially if the stormwater is making it worse for everybody around it. So I, I think it's more of an education for people, to let people know that when we can't get to everything and everybody says, you know, we put our money into this, we put in our money into it, there's a lot of people putting money into it, and we're not able to help them, and I think we need to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hondros.
Well, to piggyback on what Councilwoman Jensen said, Byron, could you put slide six up? So the, the commercial fee is already, you had it, that was it, Byron? It's already kind of done by impervious area, so it's not, it's not tiered. But I just wanted to thank the stormwater department for the last five years, other than Director Ambat and Byron and Mr. Larch before him. I don't think anybody's spent more time looking at stormwater than, than I have, but I appreciate the, the good work you guys are doing. The tiered system for residential was something that we did in SWAB. It passed unanimously, and we brought it to council to, to consider. I think if you look at the peer cities, they're all doing a tiered, so it, to, to Mr. Reeves' point, it's a more equitable way to assess the residential. But I would say at some point, we may need to revisit the commercial, but th- those stormwater fees, they're not just for the quantity, they are for the quality portion of it, too. So there is a lot of things that go into it. But thank you, Byron, for your report and for your hard work.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Over seventy million in some stage of construction right now in stormwater projects. That's impressive.
Design and construction.
And, yep. And, and Director Ambat, too, because I said, you know, I want to see what's going on. I want to see earth being moved, and, and you're making that happen. So thank you. And then, what, thirty-five million in the last six years? Excellent. The number that worries me and scares me is five-hundred-and-fifty million. That's a new number. Because I remember when I was chairman, as Councilmember here mentioned, we were talking about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred million, so obviously, there's been some other things discovered. And now Chairman Hondros is going in his committee, is going to have to figure out what to recommend to council. So I will support a tiered system as long as the baseline is six dollars per property per month, seventy-two. I don't, I don't, we can't afford to go to, to go back. We're going to have to figure out what's fair, or as fair as we can make it. Yeah, and it's not right that a nine-hundred-square-foot house is paying the same amount of money that a three-thousand-square-foot house is paying. So thank you for that, and I look forward to working on Councilmember here's issue. My guidance is we look at the drainage assistance program, because we got to be real careful. We don't want to be doing more than we're supposed to, because then we put ourselves in a legal liability situation that I would, would be, would caution the council, let's be very careful on, so. But I know we'll do it right. Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And I, I did just, had, just a quick couple of points. So one, if you can go back to the impervious chart that you had, commercial versus residential. So two questions for you, Mr. Reeves. No, not that chart, the pie chart.
Sorry, this one?
Yeah. So, you know, and I, and I certainly hear the concern, but if we look at the proportion of the revenue that comes in, it's about sixty-forty, and so is the impervious footage. You know, sixty percent coming in from commercial, and it's also sixty percent of the impervious belongs to commercial. Forty percent belongs to residential, and forty percent comes in from residential. It's not that far out of whack. I think it, it, it probably needs to be tweaked. I see, I understand about the size of the house. The concern for me, I echo Councilmember here's frustration. It, it has to be a way, as we look at this, that maybe it's by way of grants. I met with a ninety-year-old citizen today that is frustrated. All of her backyard has washed away. Her fence is gone, you know, they planted shrubbery and rose bushes, all washed away. She granted, her husband granted permission for the city and PWC to install a pipe across their, their property that goes to a manhole years ago, and that a pipe needs to be maintained, and now we're telling her that it's not their responsibility. So if an easement was granted, and I've submitted this, so that may or may not be the specifics to that situation, and I know Councilmember here worked on it as well, but the point is, I hope there's a practical way that we can look to if the city doesn't have a bandwidth to, to go and expand the drainage assistance, to design and fix. Maybe there's a grant, just like we do for people who want to improve their home. And as a designated population, low to moderates, as a designated population for seniors and other people, we have landlord programs for people to fit, fix up rental properties. I know there's got to be a way that we can have grants to assist in improving the infrastructure for these folks, even if the city's not doing it. But, but it's got to be a way that we can get there. But I just hope that as we, as we have this conversation, it is complicated, five-hundred million dollars, almost a billion dollars in stormwater needs. Five hundred million dollars, almost a billion dollars in stormwater needs. And, and hopefully that these projects will be coming, that from the master plan will be coming pretty soon so that, so that we can start to move it. I, I do wanna commend you and Ms. Ambat for improving this. You know, years ago, this was, this was not the case. We were doing about a project and a half out of the money that was being set aside. And the fact you've done thirty-five, thirty-six million in five, six years is impressive. So keep up the good work. Who was it? Councilmember Thompson in here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Byron, thank you for the presentation. It was awesome. I had so many questions that I had reached out to the city attorney, city manager, had him answer some, and I talked to Mr. Lindsay today for about an hour, answering one of the twenty-one questions I had. But this one I wanna bring to you. And the only reason I'm bringing it now is because people was talking about being fair. Can you explain how the impervious area is determined? And particularly about renters and rental property? So if we're talking about their square footage, but we're not talking about the height of their square footage, don't you think the tier table should be increased in that area? And somebody said about a cap on the price of six dollars if they haven't had an increase in five years? And we're having seven, seventy million dollars in, in projects, don't you think that the committee, stormwater committee should bring a recommendation to increase that?
So I may not have spoke correctly when I said a three thousand square foot house. I'm talking about the footprints, they're not vertical, whatever the footprint is. So if you're sitting on top of the house looking, looking down, whatever that impervious footprint is. Now, it may, you may, if a three thousand square foot house may have a twenty-five hundred square foot impervious footprint. So that's what I'm talking about, the impervious footprints. They're not, it, it doesn't go, it doesn't go as far as how big your actual square footage for your house is. And as far as renters go, the, the, the stormwater fee is put on the property bill. So the property owner pays it. Now whether they pass that on to the renter, that's probably what they do. But when you talk about the, the fee, the tiered stormwater rate structure, and when you do a tiered stormwater rate structure, you start off wanting it to be revenue neutral. So you don't wanna, you don't wanna go backwards. You don't wanna generate less revenue. So you would work the tier structure to where you're revenue neutral. Now, if, if taking a tiered stormwater rate structure, if the council wants to examine fee increases or things like that, that can be addressed. But I think, you know, we need to be able to identify what the fee increase would, would go towards.
Can I have a follow-up, Mr. Mayor? That's exactly what I'm talking about, the impervious area. So in other words, the reason I say apartment complexes is because concrete create more stormwater. So the more concrete you have, the more stormwater you have. These apartment complexes are having more and more concrete with parking. That was my question.
Yeah, and if, if, if they've been developed after two thousand and nine, then they've had to meet the city's stormwater.
Say that again?
If they've been developed since two thousand and nine, they've had to meet the city's stormwater development ordinance, where they have to reduce peak runoff discharges for the ten and the two-year storm event. So you'll see a lot of apartment complexes may have an underground system under the parking lot. They may have a retention pond. So they should be reducing the amount of discharge from that site after they're developed.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, you had?
Yes, sir. Just, just wanna follow back up because I, I, I don't feel like I received a re, a response. I mean, I appreciate a few echoes on it. And I resent the photo. I only sent one this time so that you could get them. Apparently, I, I was sending too many. But when, when we come up on issues like this, that if council would look at their photo, that particular pipe runs in the back of someone's yard all the way through to the road. I think that road is Metz Road. And from where you can see the top of that pipe, it's about four more feet and you will be touching the PW, PWC fence. Now, in looking at that photo, as I was saying, there must be some assistance or some support for seniors or people, period, just residents, period, to do any kind of repair, to clean that out. Uh, cause like I say, pick and shovel and rake is not going to do it. So what my concern is, I, I appreciate those of you, uh, uh, Mayor, that you, how you, but where do we go from here? I mean, do we send it back to, to stormwater? Because it's been sent back to stormwater and, and issues like this over the years. I'm just trying to figure out where we're going from here.
So tonight was an overview of where we are with the overall program. I know that this is something that's on the stormwater committee. I think you, you're on there, right?
Yes, I've brought this.
So, so I know that this was something that was coming back to revisit it. And, and I hope that stormwater can work through the, the pros and cons and listen to staff recommendation on, on their part. But this, this will have to be a policy decision and then, then hopefully it'll come, if it, if it's successful, back to council to do something. I'm with you. It needs some closure to it.
And, and, and my understanding is, is we were gonna discuss the eligibility requirements at the December committee meeting to, to address the eligibility concern.
We'll see what happens then. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Reeves, we appreciate it. Didn't see any other questions. So thank you, council. Great report. Keep up the good work, guys. Item four point oh two, community safety residential camera program. Chief Hawkins, how are you?
I'm well. Thank, thank you, Mayor. I know your CAM. I'm gonna pull up the CAM. It's actually, um, great work that was, who, where is it? That was completed by Michael White. Specifically, the question that came up, it was given direction regarding, "How can the city basically pay for it?" And that was most of the research that Michael White conducted in regards to purchasing, I know the request was Ring cameras, but camera systems so that the citizens can connect to our possible FUSIS system. So the researcher he found out, found the way to be able to do it. You have to correlate it with the age of the community resident as well as the residential area being qualified. And it found that you're able to be qualified under the HUD, qualified residential areas that already exist, and the residents have to be over sixty-five. So we had already, the police department had submitted a grant request and we're still waiting for that feedback for this program. This is why I am presenting it, of the concept and the idea, regarding where we focus if these cameras were available for the background. And what we did was, we went and discussed with economic development, what are the existing areas that are in compete, in our community? Where can we outline those and how can we uplift, up, upfit them in what communities? So within your CAM, you'll also have maps in the three different districts of those areas that are already existing. Some of those overlap with a little bit, some of the crime areas that we're focusing on, but not all of them. They were solely restricted on the area map for, that are HUD, HUD qualified. And then we did a proposal of what that cost would be per camera and to make sure it's someone who is certified to install them, so there's no issues. The next page in your CAM, you'll see what the proposal is. There are certain stipulations with this program. It's called Residential Real-Time Streaming Protocol Camera. So in other words, it's not a specific type of brand of camera. There's a couple of options and that, that average range was two hundred and fifty dollars per camera. And you have to actually, also, that would qualify for a one-year subscription. That resident has to have internet or some type of capability to have it. They would also sign an agreement saying that they would share if something happened in the area, some type of upload, a certain clip if a crime happened in their community. But it's definitely their choice and that is, is nothing connected where the police department are watching their cameras whatsoever. It is the same way they submit, people submit camera systems or camera clips to the cloud and they just isolate that clip of what we're looking for. And this is pretty much the application process of just a general, how could this be rolled out? And, and how would it be communicated? So we have something similar that we're doing now already in regards to, we call it the, we wrote a grant and we call it the golden years. Or actually, project operation best years. In which we're already offering floodlights to residents that are over sixty-five. And we're deploying that with people to install them. So we, when we wrote our grant, we wrote it consistent with that. Our crime prevention, people would go do an assessment, make sure they qualified and make sure they can be installed. So I'm ready for questions.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. You know, I know this was something that I kinda proposed to council some months ago. Just a volunteer program for senior population was a qualified group that you kinda enhance safety, kind of like, you know, the monitoring system. If someone falls, you could press it and, and you have someone who can, who can dial in and assist when needed. So basically what you found with these conditions, this would be something that's completely voluntary.
Yes.
And if you meet the qualifications according to HUD standards or age, is a senior, sixty-five and older, then, then you could get it as a, as a grant. But they would have to pay the ongoing renewal annual fees.
After the first year, yes.
The following year.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, well, that's good. I was, kinda had a little concern about that, what it was. Okay. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. My question is, for this, this system, can it be linked, is it linked to, or can it be linked to like the Ring system or is this a separate system?
It, it actually cannot be the vendor Ring.
Okay.
Specifically because we are, we are getting this, the software called FUSIS that allows us to upload cameras that already exist in our community. We, we're starting to roll it out a little bit with our business district. This makes sure we answer all questions that are going on right now with it. But Ring is one vendor that cannot be used. But there are many other, you don't have to have one specific. There are many different names that have, they really just have to have what's called the, the real, make sure I get the, the words right, uh, real-time streaming system.
Okay, so that was my question. So it can be linked to other systems?
That's correct.
Okay, it's almost like an app, per se?
That's correct. That's correct. It, it, and it, the only system that can't be is Ring.
Okay, okay. And then, well, I guess my sec, well, I guess you kinda answered cause I was gonna say the second question as far as the grant.
We haven't received word, we haven't received word back if we've received it or not. I think this research was, when the mayor proposed it to see, how can the city use general funds to pay for it?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for this info. Additional cameras are what we need. I appreciate the citizens being willing to step up and, and do this if they feel led. As a chief of police, I hope in your upcoming budget that you're probably working on or making suggestions for, that you're gonna include additional cameras that we can place throughout the city. And then city manager, I do expect to see some budget from you for more cameras throughout our city. Cameras help us solve crime, which helps us save lives. So thank you, Mr. City Manager, because you have slowly, over the years, added cameras and I wanna see us add even more. And thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Council, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
I'm sorry, one more question. Now with this system, can anybody have access to it? Like if they have, if they have the system download? I forgot what, is it Nextdoor where they can, I think it's Nextdoor. I forgot, one of those sites where you can see what's going on or look at the videos? Will everybody have access to that?
So remember, this is the residence camera. This is not the police department. It's the residence camera. And like right now, residents can share their video. They just have to go through a line and we, we show them how to share a clip. But this is just adding additional. So it's not the city's, it will not be the police department. Is this helping them share if something happens in their area versus, and it's a time-consuming to, one, if they don't have a camera system, especially if they're elderly, how can they have someone to aid them and evaluate what's going on in that community? So, but it is their system.
Okay. And I was asking, cause I don't remember what system it is, but again, they can go online and they can see what's going on in certain areas. Like, like you mentioned, as far as sharing it, so they do have access to share it?
Absolutely.
To like a community page?
I don't, is it because it's their?
They can share.
They can share, yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we implement the program as outlined by Chief.
So, so where is that? You've applied for the grant, so is, is any action needed before we know if we've been awarded that? Mr. Manager?
No, we, we don't, we haven't been notified that we're awarded yet. And this is just a proposal for your direction to see, do we start researching to find out funds, how to pay for it?
Okay, so that, that would be it, Councilmember Thompson? Yeah, just consensus motion to proceed in the direction as stated. So it's a consensus motion by Councilmember Thompson, is there's second. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin? All right, any discussion? Those in favor? All right, all right. Councilmember Honduras, you, you in favor? No? All right, so, now I'm one. Okay, well, keep going. We'll keep our fingers crossed for, uh...
Funding options?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right. Next up, Parks, oh, Mr. Gibson, he's just getting in. Thank you. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Mayor, council, thank y'all. I come with good news. Good news. Appreciate y'all listening to this report. There's been some good things happening and dirt's moving. You can see the agenda here. There, right at the end, there's a couple of things that we're gonna ask you to give us some direction, be a little patient. Some of the completed projects, as we've already had. Here's a, here's a great one right here, the Bill Chris Center. If you weren't there, you missed it. It was a great opening. Over the past week and a half, they've had about seven hundred to eight hundred people walk through to make sure that they understand what the, the bond has done for that population of people in that area. People are pleased with what we've done. So this is a great project here. You can see all of the people there that cut the ribbon. Some people still crying. So it was a great thing. Appreciate council's patience and the community's patience with us getting this project done as us, as what we can do once we get everybody right. Construction management, they're, they're doing a wonderful job, even putting up with me. So that's a, that's a good thing. The Senior Citizen East, it's gonna be another project that's gonna complement Senior Citizen or Bill Chris Center on the west. It'll have a little urban feel to it, but as you can see, it's underway. We're ahead of schedule with that project. There was some economy of scales with another project that allowed us to move some dirt over there so we could get that project going as quickly as possible. Same contractor, so we should be a little bit smoother with this project. And you can see where the construction phase is and how much money is unencumbered. That's a, that's a pretty good number. But you can see here what that's gonna look like. There's been so many comments about making sure that we do the same level with Senior Citizen East that we did with Bill Chris. And, and we appreciate that, to make sure that we can live up to the standards that we've set. But Senior Citizen East is underway and, and making sure that we stay on task with that one. Here we go. MacArthur Road Sports Complex. I'll, I'll tell you what, the military has been understanding, patient, and very agreeable in what it's taking us to, to get this project moving in the right direction. And as many people who have, who have to touch this thing as far as being leased property from the federal government, it's not always an easy task, but Fort Bragg has been a tremendous partner and a good neighbor. You can see where we've just about finished up the, the final design. We're having conversation over how water drains and where utilities come in and how we bring people into the site with DOT. There's still some conversation that needs to take place there. But as you can see, if we back up a little bit, the unencumbered is about three million. We're working on ways to make that number get back to the original budget. We're doing some work with an estimator to make sure that we can stay or understand what our challenges are for this project. And we're gonna have to have a, probably have a conversation with the manager and council to get us to a better number because that unencumbered number's not gonna, not gonna get us where we need to be with this project. Hopefully, we don't have no questions on that. Mazaric Tennis Center, it's funded. It's one of, another signature project. It's a, a much-needed... one of another signature project. It's a much-needed environment for people who play tennis and who are fastly growing in the pickleball environment. That project is going to be, as much as they're shaping it and moving dirt, and once we finish with that one, I just can't wait to see what that does for this community as far as a community, a livability environment. And I talked with the Mayor Pro Tim, and we will be planting trees back.
Thank you.
You can see what this looks like from a standpoint of how it's gonna add tremendous value to this community as far as that tennis environment. Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center, this is another project for our special needs community that's going well. It's not moving as fast as we'd like for it to move, but construction management is pushing the envelope to get that up and running. We've had some other conversations with some other providers. Everybody's looking forward to providing the kind of recreational facility for our special needs community, so that we can make sure we're providing the best services we can. So, but that's, it's underway. The foundation should be going in. Steel should be up in the air over the next 30 to 45 days. Maple Sea Smith, going well. Splash Pad is probably about 85 to 90% complete. Playground unit is in. We're waiting to put some rubber up under the playground unit for the weather sets in. Schedules are schedules. The building area where we want to put up the new building, we've had to dig down to find some suitable soil, and then we have to come back up. But that project is moving well, and you can see the unencumbered number. The building is just waiting to be delivered, so we can move forward there and hopefully complete that project before the spring of the year gets here, or right at the spring of the year, so we can have a great ribbon cutting there. And here's what it looks like. Those are, those pictures should be updated. We'll make sure we do that next time we hear. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., definitely made some promises that we have to keep since Mr. Lacy has passed away. And we definitely don't want to embarrass ourselves and not make this one of the best projects that we can over the next probably year and a half. There are some challenges. We're talking and making the right kinds of decisions and making sure people understand what the challenges are. But I don't see us failing in making that happen. We're gonna be having some conversations with our technical review committee. Construction management is making sure that we don't miss anything, because you're in between two creeks, and then you have a conservation easement that we have to be very particular about how we manage that, that phasing in of such a great project that people have been talking about for the last 16, 17 years. Cape Fear River Park, this is gonna be coming to you, I think, in the next meeting, I'm not sure. But I saw some of the PowerPoint presentation or some of the upscale riverfront park, Cape Fear River Park, which has a bigger number than that unencumbered number, but it's pretty. So we'll be bringing that to you to see where, how you feel about it and where you want to go, where you want us to go with that. But construction management has found some architects who actually building on the rivers, what they do, and they have some great ideas. We just have to be able to afford them. And this was, you can see the Glenville Trail, Lake Trail. We should be having some community meetings and feasibility study being done. I think soon as we can get on the calendar and get that contract out, so that we can get the public engaged in this process and move it forward. There's some great things happening on Murkison Road in that corridor. Fayetteville State is doing a wonderful job. And we just need to make sure that we are partnering and moving our part in the right direction to make sure that, that we don't get in the way and that we add value. But we're, this is a great project here, too. Any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Oh, no. Not getting off that easy. All right, Councilman Hare, and then I have a question.
Oh, Lord.
No, sir, it's all good.
Good.
It's all good. And you do good work. You have done well over these years that I've known you. So you're doing well, projects are well.
I ain't doing it by myself, though.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you and the entire team.
All right.
Flooding, concern, any concerns for the Senior Center East area?
No, sir.
You know, we do get water heavy there, flooding there over the years. You know, when we have those major, major floods.
I mean, anytime that you have 10 or 12 inches of rain.
Right.
Just our normal thunderstorms, if you look at the way that area falls off and the way that they've designed it, if you get a hurricane, it's a hurricane. I don't see us having a normal thunderstorm in a day and then saying, oh, you know, everybody evacuate. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Right, right. So we look good.
I think we're gonna be fine.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
All right. So on the MLK, the 2.5, it was, or 2 million that was committed by the city, why is it not shown on the timeline here?
I'll have to ask that question. It's been appropriated by council. I don't know if it's not there just because we haven't signed the agreements. Those agreements are gonna come to council at the next meeting. But it's in the right place. It just doesn't show here. But it's been, we're working with that. Even with the county, all of that's in here, and we'll make sure it shows up the next time, once that signage or the consent goes through on the next meeting.
Okay.
But it hasn't disappeared, because we're working with that.
Yeah.
I think what you're seeing here is what's in the bond itself that was appropriated those many years back. Because there's also some state money that you're gonna see show up once everything's been approved, and that'll pop up here, too.
Well, I get the source of funding. I guess Ms. Olivera and manager will get it in there, but.
Yes, sir.
We definitely need to see it, just so it's tracked.
I appreciate it.
Other thing is on the River Park, there've been a couple of different ideas kicked around. You don't have any concepts yet until it says November, so this month, there'll be some concepts.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about just now. There are some that construction management, Rob Stone, is putting together with the architect. And they're good. They're very good. You'll see them coming to you. They're real good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for the report. It's a great report. We've been waiting, you know, a long time, and good things come to those who wait. And it's been proven this year that we've got a lot of good things that have happened. I just wanted to congratulate you on the Bill Chris Center. I know that was a big task to do, and I think that staff and everybody did a fantastic job. And I just want everybody that has not seen it to please go out west and look at the Bill Chris Center. You will, it is kind of when we built the baseball field and everybody walked in and said, I don't feel like I'm in Fayetteville anymore. And council gave Fayetteville what they deserved, a great baseball park. I think we hit the ball out of the park again with the Bill Chris Senior Center. So again, thank you. And I look forward to seeing these other projects and cutting a ribbon.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I can't say it anymore, but good evening, Mr. Gibson. Looks like District 2 has a lot going on, which is good. I did want to ask very briefly about the groundbreaking for the Maple Sea of Smith building. I heard ribbon cutting, but I at least wanted to ask about a groundbreaking.
And I apologize for that, because we should do one. I'm surprised that Ms. Phelps didn't stop me from saying that.
It's okay.
But we will do, we, that's, we should do one, exactly.
And I just thank you so much again. Like I said, District 2 has a lot coming down. And I look forward to getting some, move, where we can move forward and branch out and get into those neighborhoods with those pocket parks and really start to look at equity and surrounding.
You're exactly right. And one of the things that we should do, and we'll have a conversation with Adam about it, is that ARPA has given us an opportunity to move some of those things faster and quicker. And we can put together reports so that people know what's happening. There's an interest in North Street to make sure that they find equity. So we're, and we're working on that. So we can report on that to make sure that everybody understands what's going on and what's coming.
And then I want to ask a question. Cameras at our parks.
I don't think we have, there, where we feel that there's, we've had trouble, I would say that most of our parks have some kind of camera system. We're working with the police department, and the city manager has said that license reader cameras are the, is the only option. And we're working that into our budget to make sure that those things happen, so that people understand. We may not know who's in the car, but we know who owns the car. So we're working in that direction.
All right. Thank you so much. And my Windsor community, I hope you heard that. So thank you.
And they got that working.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Good to see you.
Good to see you also. For the residents, you know, they played a major role in us receiving, in our staff receiving input from them. So I would just encourage them to just continue to throw ideas out there, because that helps the city move forward, especially when it comes to, we were talking about the quality of life. With these projects, these are million-dollar projects.
Yes, ma'am.
And I thank the staff, because 2023, 2024, those are gonna be great years. And again, you guys are working on several projects, million-dollar projects. And that's a lot of money, and it's for a good cause, you know, again, for our community. I do want to ask a question about the Bill Chris, because I did receive a call today as far as, when is the opening for the public to utilize the facility?
I think this is the last week of just walkthroughs.
Okay.
We're trying to make sure that everything is fully functional, and just giving everybody a chance and giving the, our staff an opportunity to digest the number of people that are coming through and to make sure that we don't disappoint. So I, and I'll get that date where they can get in the water, they can start pushing the weights and just enjoying the place. And I would think that that would be here pretty soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Benevente. Oh, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to get a consensus that we accept the report for Parks and Rec, their fabulous job.
All right. As a motion by Councilmember Jensen, second by Councilmember Hondros, Thompson, and Benevente. All right.
Thank you all.
So those in favor to accept, keep pressing forward, sir.
All righty.
All right, thank you. Item 4.04, mental health co-responder research information. Good evening.
Good evening. Let me get set up here. All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager and staff. My name is Deanna Husk. I'm the administrative services manager for the police department. And tonight, I'm going to present to you research that was conducted on some mental health response models. So we work with two nationally recognized groups in dealing with mental health, NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, CIT International, Crisis Intervention Team Program Training. CIT International does not promote an embedded police co-responder model. However, officers should be able to request additional support as needed. The work of CIT International has been endorsed by the National Alliance on Mental Health, Mental Illness, which is NAMI. So mobile crisis teams, what are they? Mobile crisis teams are services that are available for crisis intervention relating to mental health, substance abuse, or developmental disabilities. So what can you expect from mobile crisis? Initial support and triage, assessment of the crisis, short-term crisis management, referrals, supportive collaborative crisis planning, and consultation and advocacy. So let's talk about what we have now here in Fayetteville and in Cumberland County. We have Alliance Behavioral Health contracts with therapeutic alternatives to provide mobile crisis in Cumberland County. They service 14 counties. They're mobile 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The goal is to stabilize the crisis. They have immediate telephonic response, face-to-face crisis response, and this is important, within two hours, to provide evaluation and triage crisis. They cannot respond to life-threatening emergencies or violent situations, such as a person who has a weapon, or one who is attempting to hurt themselves or others. They cannot respond to domestic violence disturbances. They cannot respond to requests for transportation in non-crisis situations. They cannot respond to requests for step-down services from inpatient hospitalization. They cannot respond to requests to serve individuals from other counties and states. So I want you to look at this. This is the total amount of calls responded to in Cumberland County and Fayetteville. So in the month of March, nine calls. April 10, May 16, June 11, July 11, August 13, September 22, and October 10. So approximately 102 calls in eight months. What's important is Fayetteville PD receives at a minimum three mental health calls per day, which averages 90 per month. So in eight months, they've responded to about 102. We're responding to on average 90 per month, which was, which is 1,080 annually.
Numbers versus the city's numbers?
No, they're all together, sir.
Okay.
They're all together. So let's talk about Cherry Hospital. It's a psychiatric hospital, one of three in the state of North Carolina. They service 38 counties. They have 314 staff beds. And so when we reached out, their attorney said they couldn't release county information as to how many beds were there from Cumberland County and Fayetteville. So here's some mental health response model variations. There's law enforcement calls for after-event support, law enforcement calls for non-clinical support, peer support workers that join law enforcement, clinical staff advice from dispatch centers, law enforcement who obtains clinical support virtually, FIRE and/or EMS that join law enforcement and clinicians, and multi-professional teams. So here's some examples of some co-response models and the variations based on community needs and capacities. So I looked at three different ones that I felt that you might be of interest of, and they're here in North Carolina, which I thought was important. The first one is the Raleigh Police Department Acorns, which launched August of 2021. An acorn stands for addressing crises through outreach, referrals, networking, and service. Again, this is very important. Referrals and calls for service are responded to by a social worker and officer as a follow-up to an initial encounter. They are not 911-driven calls. They provide outreach, and they provide education. In the field services, they're for individuals requesting services or experiencing crises, transportation for individuals, calls for service. They serve as a follow-up to the initial police call by an officer and social worker. The staff is in plain clothes, and this is another important part. The individual must voluntarily want to work with the Acorn staff to receive the services. If they don't want to voluntarily want to receive the services, they're not going to be able to work with that staff. So they do an intervention investigation, and their team consists of eight individuals, a lieutenant, a detective, three social workers, and three officers. Here's the funding part. They use the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, so that was about 2 million, to expand the program and provide funding for gun violence. And in their 2022 budget, they wanted to have a commitment to reduce eliminate homelessness, and through their general fund, a contribution of 6.3 million. a contribution of 6.3 million, and again, to grow the program. Not a cheap model. Um, then we're going to go to Durham HART. This launched in June of 2022, the first three pilots. So HART stands for Holistic Empathetic Assistance Response Teams. This program falls under the City of Durham's Community Safety Department, which has been operational since 2021. This department is autonomous and operating separately from the PD, the fire, and EMS. They report directly to a deputy city manager. The HART program is comprised of four crisis response pilots that I'll be talking about this evening. Crisis Call Diversion, Community Response Teams, Care Navigation, and Co-Response. So Pilot One, they consult with 911 dispatchers, providing information that can support better outcomes. They're in, they have, what's nice is they have an embedded licensed mental health clinician into their 911 call center that triages the calls. Um, the crisis call counselors, they serve eight major functions. They assess the calls, they can divert the calls, they can connect the calls, dispatch the calls with the community response team, they can consult with the 911 dispatchers for better outcomes, they can de-escalate situations, they can support first responders, and they can follow up after the crisis. Right now, they currently only have one clinician embedded in their 911 call center, working Monday through Friday, 9 to 5 p.m. Their pilot two is their community response team. They dispatch unarmed, three-person teams with a licensed mental health clinician, peer support specialist, and EMTs, and as first responders instead of police when you call 911 about nonviolent mental health crisis or quality of life concerns. So the CRT team has five major functions. They identify, they dispatch, they arrive on scene in less than 30 minutes, they deliver person-centered, trauma-informed care, and they transport people to appropriate community-based care. Again, they respond to low priority calls with no weapons or physical violence. Pilot three is their Care Navigation. It's a two-person team of, of a peer support specialist that follow up within 48 hours of the initial call. Um, they're made up of a community health worker and a peer support specialist. So they follow up, they do continuation of care, they respond in pairs, and they have multiple check-ins. Pilot four launched in September. This is where they're going to send a licensed clinical, um, clinician with a CIT officer to respond to the highest risk calls. So the co-response entails a joint response from Durham PD and Community Safety Department. Um, they'll dispatch the 911 with an officer, along with a licensed clinician, where there is a higher risk of violence. This has not happened yet. It's going to start pilot January 1st of 2023, this co-response team. Um, they will assess, they will de-escalate, they will deliver, they will connect, and they will support. So during the initial pilot phase, the Crisis Call Diversion is operating Monday through Friday from 9 to 5 p.m. The Community Response Teams, seven days a week, 9 a.m. to 9 p.m., and Care Navigation, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5 p.m. The Community Response Teams and Care Navigation is only operating in 12 beats during these pilot phases. This is approximately one-third of the city. A Crisis Call Diversion is operational to Durham citywide. Um, in 2021, the council set aside 2.8 million in their budget, which was for a 15-person Community Safety Department. Positions included community responders, social workers, and researchers. And you can see they took approximately, um, over 4 million out of their Community Safety General Fund for those 20 full-time people and grant funds of 139,000. So then I actually talked with people from Greenville. And I think you're going to find this one interesting also. They began in February of 2021 with Greenville Police partnering with Integrated Family Services, um, their mobile crisis team. But what's nice about this crisis team, you have two full-time staff from the crisis unit, working within GPD headquarters with extended evening and nighttime hours, seven days a week. So shift one is 7 a.m. to 3 p.m., shift two is 4 p.m. to 12 a.m. The co-responders are dispatched through radios directly by Greenville Police Department Communications. And then the after-hours calls between the 12 a.m. and 7 a.m. require the mobile crisis number to be called to request assistance. The program is funded by Trillium Health Services, the managed care organization that services Pitt County where Greenville is located. This is not costing the city anything. It's not costing the PD anything. There's an MOU in place between Trillium and Greenville Police Department, which outlines the duties and protocols for the mobile crisis staff working in-house at the Greenville Police Department. So co-responders are not dispatched to high-risk calls. They focus on low-risk calls and frequent repeat calls. They arrive in separate cars from the officers. The officer must secure the scene prior to a co-responder making contact, just as we would do with fire and EMS. They do not wear any protective gear. They arrive in plain clothes. But this is the part that's important. The average response time with in-house co-responders is 15 minutes compared to up to a two-hours response, or maybe no response at all. So I wanted to share, share with you some of our mental health totals. So under my supervision umbrella is our mental health liaison coordinator and our homeless coordinator. So I want to, I want you to focus on the month to date and the year to date. So we started keeping data in August. Um, Ms. Marcus is, is new to our organization. So our front lobby field contacts were averaging about 29 a month, 105 already year-to-date. Police callouts, she has seen maybe six a month, or month-to-date, and 18 already for the year. Direct calls to her, 34 month-to-date, 78 year-to-date. Call referrals, 44 month-to-date, year-to-date 95. And this is really important, the total mental health-related calls for service, 176 for the month of October, and already year-to-date is 450. That concludes my presentation. Um, do you have any questions?
Yes, we do. And thank you. Very thorough presentation. Uh, Mayor Protem Dawkins, Benevente, and then I had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, thank you, uh, for doing all the work. Uh, this, we know it's a problem. Uh, we got to figure it out. Um, I'm, my strategy is if, if you find a wheel that's working somewhere else in the country, and you've definitely looked in North Carolina, uh, the reason, uh, let's try to look at it, uh, if it's around the country. As I mentioned to the city manager, I met with the Garrison Commander, the Deputy Garrison Commander. They have obviously, uh, mental health situations out there on post that they deal with, and, uh, they, they want to collaborate with our city as much as possible. The Deputy Garrison Commander just, uh, got here from Lakewood, Washington, a, a city near Fort Lewis, another large army installation, Joint Base, um, Mc, uh, Lewis McCord. And my guidance, and maybe the city manager needs to work with the Chief of Police and you and your department. This is a good first step, what you've done. Uh, but what I think the mayor's concern was when he and I chatted was that we may want to even have uniformed officers with mental health, uh, uh, bona fides, uh, or we figure out a model that's going to work, um, long-term, uh, to help us de-escalate because our mental health crises problems are growing exponentially, as you showed. So, uh, thank you for what you've done, and, um, I hope the council can come to consensus as we listen to other council members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Councilmember Benevente.
Do you mind heading to the second page of the presentation as you relate to the CIT, CIT's, um, guidance?
We're trying to bring it up.
Is it this one? Yeah, we're trying to bring it back up to, um, second page.
I was ready to go home. I'm, I'm clicking on.
No, no, yeah, no. This, this page or this page?
Not a fill.
Is it that one?
Uh, related to what they recommend is it relates to embedded versus not embedded? I had a question.
Crisis intervention check is up.
I can't, I can't see it. I get my, here it is. Thank you very much. Um, they do not promote an embedded co-responder model. What do they recommend in that case?
What they are recommending, and, and when we're saying about not being embedded, mental health wants to be able to go out with mental health. So when they're saying not embedded, they're saying that the officer should be able to request that support from mental health. The mental health should not maybe necessarily be embedded within that department. So as the Durham model.
Right. And I, and I think I want to direct our councils to, to really hear what was just said there. Um, there's three options that we were given. Only one of them follows the CIT recommendation, which is the Durham model. And I think that's important because when we talk about how voluntarily people feel about receiving help, it's directly correlated, from my view, to whether or not the police are involved. So I like the HART team in Durham. I hope other folks can, um, contribute to this discussion, but that'll be the motion I'd like to make later, uh, as far as what we direct our staff to research and bring to, make our version.
You had something, chief?
Yeah. So, uh, just keeping in mind, the Durham model has four pilot stages, correct? And one of the last stage did kind of include that, but they did have one that did not. And I think I wanted to share, um, uh, in combination with, uh, Mayor Protemp, talking about what exists, right? We have to realize what exists already. And in a combination of how do we increase those services, we see where Greenville is offering those services a lot more than we here are. As far as, and, and to your point of saying, just the response, whether it's, whether it's embedded or not, which is the agreed upon, not embedded, but at least having a mobile response available is heightened in Greenville than it is here.
Uh, uh, thank you. Uh, can you pull back up the, um, the different pilot programs?
Okay. Which city?
Uh, Durham.
Okay.
Here we go.
It's the first one.
Are these the ones you're looking at, the four different programs within Durham?
Right. So, you know, and I, and I am glad to, to actually be able to quantify what we knew was happening. I mean, so the number of calls that we're seeing, uh, on a monthly basis was?
Minimum, at a minimum.
Yeah, minimum.
Minimum, yeah. This is not, th- these are the calls that when they come in, they're saying they're having a mental crisis. This is not when we respond to, uh, a theft, or we respond to a domestic violence and then find out there's something mental health-related.
Yeah. So, and the Greenville model actually showed a partnership with a, a provider,
Exactly.
Okay, which the provider funded it, and I guess based on some of the services that they're able to. So after my follow-up meetings with, uh, Alliance, who's the, who's the managed care provider here, they told us that they received roughly about $2 billion with a B for the 10 counties that they manage. Okay, so money is, is available. Um, now, their proportionate share to our community for the uninsured that, that, that a lot of this will hit, the people that are not in their system with providers already, uh, is a minimal amount compared to Raleigh, Durham, and other places, because it's supplemented. 25 million, I think, is supplemented by Wake County and Raleigh for what they're, they're given out of that 2 billion and how they disperse it. So there are some gaps for sure, but I'm hoping that as we look at this, if we could, you know, hopefully look at a piloted program, um, that, that brought in some partnerships with a provider that also was able to do some billing, um, I think, I think that would, that would help us. But just the fact of, of why we wonder on that two hours, that the two hours may be two days, is because of the funding that's allocated and not supplemented by our county providers. That was the way I understood that. So I think that we see this is certainly a city problem, the fact, the fact that 100 calls at a minimum are going toward this from our police department alone. Um, but there is a gap. So I'm, I'm thankful that you all are able to kind of paint a better picture for this. And hopefully, uh, this evening the council will, will look to kind of push this a little further. So I'll go to Councilmember Thompson, uh, Banks McLaughlin, Jensen, and then Benevente, second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you pretty much asked part of my question. And it was about, I thought the Greenville project was probably the best that would suit, uh, because we didn't have to pay for it, for one. And two, we already have services. But here's part of my questions. Have we reached out to what medical facilities that are able to provide those services between that hours of 7:00 and 12:00? And would it behoove us to hire somebody from the time of 12:00 to 7:00, when I guess you can tell me, or data would show those when you get the most calls? That's question number one. Question number two is, what do we consider high risk, where they're able to go out to, and what's not considered high risk? Uh, question number three was the last slide. I couldn't understand where the, I believe the major from Salvation Army explained to us that they're never full. But during the month of October, it has this full. What happened in October that the Salvation Army was full that was turning people away?
So let me work backwards. I apologize for that being in the slide. That was, we were correlating originally, but we updated our slides and didn't include that slide. So you only have that. Let me go back to your first question. I think your first question goes to what Mayor, the mayor was talking about regarding services that exist out there. And why do we have in our community a two-hour expected response time if they're already being funded to cover our community? And then if we have the debt, so how do we increase the services, the same equivalent, for example, what's be, but what's being offered through Trillium Health? Is that jurisdictional response for, for mobile crisis? What's being offered in our community is therapeutic, through Alliance therapeutic. So the question now comes in, why do we have a two-hour response if we have this many calls that we know that are documented? And how can we increase that? How can we increase that to provide the same services that is allowed in the state for our community? So when you say higher, I, this is, they're the professionals who do this work. So that's my question, if I answered that question. And what was your second question again? I apologize.
Second question is, what determines high risk?
They listed out there, they listed it on the right-hand side, which is, um, um, what do they don't respond to? Is it right here? Do not respond to anything involving a weapon, um, anything involving violence. Um, it's equivalent, let me see, who had it, who had it outlined? Which one was?
I think it's.
Was it? It's on Alliance? Okay. Oh, that's right. That's up to the top, what, what we do have. Right there. They, they listed out what they do not respond to, which is violent situations, person has a weapon, um, attempting to hurt themselves or others, domestic violence, anybody who's requesting transportation for a non-crisis situation, request for step-down services for inpatient hos- hospitalization, or serve individuals from other counties and states. So there, depending on how the call comes in 911, they tell us what they're not coming to.
And sometimes.
And we make that request. We, an example will be, um, a week and a half ago, we had a call, and it was not violent, but there was someone going to a mental health crisis in a business locked in, and we needed there to come out. And we waited, and they said we're, they're not coming out. And we knew that this person's locked in, we're going to have to pull them out. That's a case that we, we need them to come help us. And we waited three and a half, maybe hours till eventually we had to, because it was in a business, get that person out of that, um, out the, um, bathroom. They didn't have a weapon, we knew that. We knew that, um, we were going to probably have, they were not refusing to come out. So that's a case where we thought it was a crisis. They had just been, well, without full detail. So they, we knew that they were close enough and going to have to be back, admitted back to the hospital.
Okay. Okay, chief. All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, most of the questions has, um, have been answered, but, um, before we make, you know, the decision to take a consensus, a consensus, I think we do need to consider partnership, um, with different agencies, you know, whether it's Fort Bragg, the county. Have we had a conversation with the county since they kind of handle mental health? Have we had a conversation with, okay. Um, we're having a, a conversation with them if we hadn't already. Um, I am interested, um, in both. I'm looking at the, the good outweighs the bad as far as, um, with Durham and Greenville. I like Durham program where they have the Trillium, you know, um, as far as the funding, uh, the funding grants. However, I am interested, um, in getting a little bit more additional information with Greenville because one of the things, um, you mentioned as far as the, the amount of cost that's coming in. And the timeframe from Durham was a little bit different. However, I like how Greenville had the two shifts, where it's basically 24 hours, because that plays the different. If someone is, um, in a facility just from 8:00 to 5:00, most of the calls might come after that. So I think that that's something we might want to consider as far as the time and the funding and a partnership.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Uh, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I, I just have a few things to say about this, and I think that the council needs to, um, kind of think about this as we go through it. I personally like the Durham model. The issues that I see is, um, that we all say, you know, we all want to hire someone and say, you know, let's, we can hire this group, or this nonprofit, or this to take care of the mental health. But there's not enough. There is just, and we, and I think people that are in it, no, there's not enough mental health counselors here in Cumberland County, Robinson County, anywhere around us. So we can make all these plans, but the root of the problem is there's not enough. If the mental he- health counselor goes out there, number one, where are we going, where can they go to get help? Where can they go to get help? And how long is it going to take to get help? Because there's no one, no one's coming, because we need more mental health counselors. So what I am going to ask is, as a council, as we're sitting here, I know that the one in Greenville is probably working pretty well, and, but because of East Carolina, you have a whole school for mental health and to get a doctorate, and they are partnering with them. So I know that we have spoken and have talked about this, that, you know, we have three to four universities around us. We have Campbell that does mental health. We have, I know that Methodist is starting to do it. We have talked to Fayetteville State to get back into it. But I think we can make all these decisions and say, all these things are great, but if we can't give you the help, you can have the money, but if you don't have the help. So it goes deeper into just making the policy. So we've got a lot of work to do to help y'all. And I just want to thank you. And the other thing that I'd like to say is, the calls were, what were they, 190 a day or something like that that you get?
Ninety a month, minimum three a day, minimum.
Minimum three a day. And to put it in perspective, those are the people that are calling.
That's correct.
Those are the people that are calling, asking for help. Many of us go to a stoplight, and we see somebody to our left and somebody to our right, and they probably need to call. So we do have a crisis, and we need to kind of think about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Benavente.
My biggest concern with the Greenville model is that we're going to run into the same frustrations we have with Alliance. We're going to run into a situation where we don't have complete control, whether, because it's not going to be a city manager-operated function. It's going to be its own third-party business that can, you know, sort of tell us to kick rocks if we get community concerns and demands for better responses, and it's really not up to us to tell them to do anything, because they have their own CEO, and they have their own shareholders and interests that are going to be more aligned with making profit at the end of the day. I think it's important that we, that's the reason why it'll take up to two hours, and that's why they'll say no to responding to certain things, because they're not interested in what I believe is the real issue, community safety and justice. They're more interested in making sure that they are reducing liability and keeping their business running. So I think it's incredibly important that we look past the Greenville model. The reason they're 24 hours is because they're already established. The Durham models, they're pilot programs that will get up to 24 hours after they've had a chance to move forward. I think, again, the only option on the table that falls in line with what the police department said is the CIT recommendation, is to have crisis response team that's not embedded. So there's only one option here, the Durham model. They have four different, or really, they're going to be operating under a Department of Community Safety, which you'll see on our agenda, is something that we have coming up. So at this time, Mr. Mayor, if anyone else is looking to add to the discussion, I'll just make a motion.
I'll come back to, I did have one point, since I've been speaking with some of these stakeholders in this space. Two things, one, I think that she's right. A behavioral health partnership and ECU hospital from physical and behavioral health have a partnership of a bed. I've asked Mr. Nagaskin from Cape Fear, he's looking at how that fits together. We do not have, in my opinion, the most cooperative MCO, which is Alliance in this case. But I will say this, I have also ran into a lot of providers who have been trying to get into the system with Alliance. So I don't think we have a provider shortage, we have a managed care acceptance of the providers. And so maybe there's a way that we have some type of RFQ, RFP. I do think we have to hire some professionals. I know that these folks have to have 3,000 hours on the job in this space, I think, to get licensed, roughly. Y'all may correct that, but there could be an opportunity for some of these people who are trying to get into the career to be able to help us in some paid capacity, but to also have a professional team that is on standby, that contracts. I do see, my computer's not loading your presentation, so I'm going off a guesswork. But there was, there was some allocation, I think, from Durham of funding that then they were able to put together some, some options with it. But I do think the Durham Heart model, either the second or third pilot, I can't recall which.
So the first one I remember is just having the one person embedded in, in the 911 center, a dedicated clinician. The second one is the response team, three-person license.
The nonviolent response team, yeah. That was the one that I was favoring. But either way, I think that something in that direction, you know, and I would be interested to see how many calls these other two comparable communities have. So Durham probably is a little bit more consistent with our demand.
Well, remember, they just started, so it's going to be probably a little scarce on getting the true data with them.
Well, I guess, just like we were able to pull calls related to mental health, if they had that data, to say if it was 90 a month, 100 a month, you know, I'm sure Greenville's a lot less. But I think that there's more similarities between Fayetteville and Durham than probably Fayetteville and Greenville.
To your point, Mayor, I think, and, so one, remember, it took us a short time period, but a minute, to get Ms. Elizabeth to help us figure out what was going on. She's sitting right there, so she's, so she's helped us understand what's going on. Because other than that, you come up, other than that, we were turning our wheels. But in this discussion, we have found that there are people in the community that say, how can I provide service? What can we do? We're not the professionals. And probably talking to someone in the medical field to say, what are the criteria in order to find the resources in the community to be able to join together and respond is an option. So I agree that there are people in the community who can't figure out, how can I provide services to that extent? And so, you want to say something, Elizabeth?
Are we on the right track?
Thank you guys so much for letting me address. Yes, I think that we're definitely on the right track. I think that obviously, mental health is not something that we will ever be able to fully remove when it comes from the police department, because the number that you're going to call every time you're in a crisis is 911. You know you're going to get a response then. So it has to look at how you go about doing it. I think that slide that shows the different types of co-response, I think co-response can be a tricky word, because it's not necessarily police officer, clinician riding in a car together. There's many different ways that it can look, and I think really, and truly, we have to look at the capabilities of our city and see what we can provide. I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, we can get out there and we can stabilize, but then what happens after? And that is the big question, is what happens after that co-response would even go out? What is the next step? And what is, what is our community able to provide?
I appreciate that. Thank you, and welcome to the team.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course, Councilmember McNair, you had a question on Benavente?
Want to make a motion?
Okay, all right. And I know that this is, this is a deeper discussion that certainly if council consensus to keep pressing forward, you know, there are a number of questions and options that I know some other council members have that we'll circle back to, to continue that. But Councilmember Benavente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just going off of the legislative text and the recommended action, I move that we receive the presentation as provided, but also want to direct staff to identify funds for co-response or support as it relates to the Durham Heart program.
All right, as a consensus motion, second about Councilmember Honduras McNair. I think that, I saw McNair. All right, discussion, those in favor, show of hands.
I have a question. It's just a process. Are seconds really needed?
Well, we, at times, we use it, but I'm sure you don't have an issue with that. It just clarifies, there are multiple council members who wanted to stamp on to the original consensus. So all of it is just consensus tonight, but thank you. All right, well, council moving to 4.05, development finance. Ma'am? Yeah, yeah, we should have showed hands. Yeah, okay, those in favor? Yes, ma'am, I had asked for it. All right, Madam Clerk, those opposed are Councilmembers Hare and Thompson. Okay, all right. Item 4.05, development finance policies, tax incremental grants. Mr. Colley.
Evening, Council, Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. So we will try to get through this. We've got a special guest here with us tonight that I'll introduce in short order. Just to make sure everybody's got that on the screen. All right. So we're here tonight to kind of pick up a conversation that we started in March of this year, but since we've got a new council, and it's been a good minute, we wanted to recap what we've been doing, where we're at, and what the next steps are, and helping to incentivize development in our community in strategic ways that council has directed staff to progress. So first up, what is development finance? So this is not economic development incentives. We're not talking about bringing jobs and tax base in with this piece. We're talking about incentivizing development in those strategic areas. But that expert said, the council development finance agents say it better than I do. So development finance is the efforts of local communities to support, encourage, and catalyze expansion through public and private investment in physical development, redevelopment, or business and industry. It's the act of contributing to a project or deal that causes that project or deal to materialize in a manner that benefits the long-term health of the community. So that's a bit of a mouthful. What we're saying here is that there are general statutes in North Carolina and across the country that allow cities to help influence the private development market and to build things that you would want to see. In particular, focus from city council has been in our redevelopment areas, and how do we spur growth in those areas appropriately and while maintaining an eye towards affordable housing and equity at the same time. So the goals we're looking for here is to utilize development tools and strategies to encourage redevelopment within identified areas, retain, expand, and attract commercial and retail business, increase the inventory of mixed-income housing, and increase municipal revenue sources, which in this place would largely be, we're talking about property taxes. There is a kind of a follow-on benefit to development policies where you look at enhanced sales tax revenue and things like that as well. Right now, we've got six redevelopment areas, the Merkison neighborhood that we're working on the Choice Transformation Plan for, Central Campbellton and downtown, since that's kind of an adjacent area, and it's in a qualified census tract. Massey Hill, Bonny Dune, Deep Creek, and 71st have been on that list for quite some time now, but we still focus on those communities and talk to them about how we spend our block grant funds and how we design programs. So they are redevelopment areas as well. So some of the example incentive opportunities that we have, first off, we're talking tonight about the tax increment grant. It's going to be called a TIG. Then there's some other tools, tax increment financing, business improvement districts. For example, we have a municipal service district for our downtown. Enhanced regulatory review, real estate conveyance, whether it's at fair market value or below that, when appropriate. Infrastructure development and improvement. We've talked about land banking, housing trust funds. You know, tomorrow, there's a general obligation bond on the ballot for affordable housing. And then other applicable incentives under North Carolina law. So this is just a very brief summation of the, kind of the menu of tools that can help with real estate development and guiding that based on council's direction. So this is all a kind of a complicated arena. You're talking about working on projects that could be in the tens of millions of dollars. And so don't take my word for it. We've hired through the city attorney's office an expert to help us navigate some of that. So the Banks Law Firm is headquartered in RTP in North Carolina. Since '94, they've provided legal services in the areas of administrative law, affordable housing, and community economic development law. Affordable housing and community economic development is pretty complicated stuff. It, just from a general statute standpoint, it takes and borrows authorities from how housing authorities work, how our economic development works, how general municipal government works, and puts all of those together in a way that helps cities our size, larger, and a couple of them smaller than us uniquely attack some of these issues. Sharad Banks is going to come up and talk to us here in just a second. He's the principal and founder of Banks Law Firm. He is an expert in this arena. And Mr. Banks, if you'll join us? And he's going to walk us through the tax increment grant policy that his firm has drafted and how that would work for the city.
Good evening, Mr. Banks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Long time no see. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pleased to be with you this evening to talk about the proposed tax increment grant policy that we've worked on together with your economic development staff. So we're talking about tax increment grants, tax increment grants. We're talking about property taxes, okay? The increment part has to do with the fact that a developer has come to this jurisdiction, is proposing, and at the point in time when we, well, is proposing to do a project that includes public benefits, and we want to assist the developer. The value of the property before the development occurs has a certain value, but after the development has been completed, the value of the property has increased, and the tax value has also increased. So that's the increment part, the tax increment, property tax increment. And what we're doing is, we're using some of the increase in property tax assessed to grant back to the developer in the first place. And that's a tax incentive for the developer to join with the city and get the project done. That's how the city works with the private developer with this particular type of tool to get a project done, okay? Tax increment grant, okay? So the purpose, of course, is to assist developers in doing projects that also benefit the city. There are some threshold requirements before the city would engage in a partnership, if you will, or in assisting a developer. First and foremost, the city would only consider projects where there is a clear public purpose involved with the project, or stated a different way, clear public benefits. Some of those include things like public infrastructure, and/or facilities, public facilities. Those benefits could be employment opportunities, they could also be economic diversity, certainly one that the city, I've heard the city talk about and have been engaged with, in fact, affordable housing or mixed-income housing, that kind of thing. Energy improvements, things of that nature. Those are public benefits. That's a threshold requirement. There has to be public benefits involved in order for the city to be engaged in a tax increment grant with a private developer, in order to assist the developer this way. Another threshold requirement, there are three threshold requirements. A second threshold requirement is that there has to be increased tax value, because that's really how we pay for it, right? The property, the tax value has increased. In fact, not only has the tax value increased, we have collected the tax, okay? And then what we're doing is, we're granting a portion of the increased tax value, the increased assessment back to the developer. That's what we're doing. So when we think about a tax increment grant, or a TIG, as they call it, we're really talking about reimbursing to the developer a portion of the increased tax value of the property. That's what we're talking about. So the second, the first threshold requirement is that there is a public purpose or public benefits. The second threshold requirement is that there is increased tax value. Excuse me. And the third requirement is what some people call a but-for test. In other words, but for the city's involvement, the project probably would not go forward. So we want to make sure that we're not doing projects where the city's tax base is just gravy for a transaction. We're doing a project where we're using our tax base because the project actually needs it in order to move forward. So that's the third threshold requirement, the but-for test, okay? A part of the policy that we've worked on includes an application process, all right? We want, we want the policy to be known, we want developers to know about the policy, and we want developers to file an application, to fill out an application and submit it to your staff. There is an application that we have drafted, it can be tweaked for us, but some of the, some of the components of the application include things like a general description of the project, you know, just what is it? And how, you know, a total description of the project. You want to, we want to know the financial assistance that's being sought from the city. Obviously, we want to know who the developer is and what their track record and experience might be. There needs to be an organizational chart, an ownership chart, so we know fully the parties that are participating in the project. Need to see a total financial structure, a development budget, a development schedule. Want to know the developer's readiness to proceed with the project. I mean, do you have... I mean, do you have site control? Are there issues regarding property rights or entitlements? Things of that nature would be part of the application process for the city staff to assess. There are, as you know much better than I, there are some priority areas that you have for development. This policy is drafted such that there would be greater incentives in your higher or your highest priority areas. And as I understand it, priority area number one includes the Murchison Choice Neighborhood and Downtown Fayetteville. And then priority area number two includes Seventy-First District Redevelopment Area, Bonny Dune Redevelopment Area, Central Camp Belton Redevelopment Area, Deep Creek, Massey Hill, Murchison Road slash Bragg Boulevard Redevelopment Area. If the policy goes forward, it, you have an application, there's a developer, we're going to enter, we're going to, we would enter into a development agreement with the developer. The developer agreement would be the subject of a public hearing. And, and then there's some, there's some guidance in the policy that speaks to the elements of a, a development agreement with the developer for this type of financial assistance. There is also proposed in the policy an aggregate, overall cap on the amount of tax increment financing that the city would expose its tax base to. This particular policy says not in excess of two percent of the annual property tax in any given year would be the aggregate cap. Obviously, that's subject to the, to the judgment of the council, but those are things that are part of this policy as drafted, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Banks. I did have a couple of questions, probably more so, well, maybe from the legal aspect for, for Mr. Colley. So I, I saw the criteria. I think you just described that public purpose, you know, infrastructure, public facilities and so forth, and the but-for. I see you have only those targeted areas. Now, is that a requirement, that it goes to low to moderate? You know, I tell you all the time that everything we have coming out of here for an incentive goes to the same group, same areas, same low to moderate, same HUD regs, which are difficult. It's, it's, it's not a lot of wiggle room with that. So every single project, it seems like we have is mirroring that. Is this limited only to those development areas, or this can be used for a project in other places? I know we want to, we want to inspire development in those areas, but is it, is it, is that a criteria?
It's not a legal requirement. You can have it in other areas legally.
So in your proposal for this particular one, is it limited only to those areas that are on this paper?
So the, the policy proposal we're putting in front of council is limited to our redevelopment areas. Council can, can, you know, absolutely direct us to, to open that to the entire city. The, the thought process behind that was that these are some difficult to develop areas that, that may need that enhanced incentive, but that, that is absolutely out of the will of council.
Okay. And council, as we look at this, I think having a tool like this, I think is good because it, it signals to people that, you know, we, we're being creative and open for opportunity. But I think that limiting it, I mean, because what we've done, everything from our housing program, the homeowner down payment, everything has targeted this, and then we've had to gently expand it because we didn't get a lot of participation. So I, I hope that as we consider that, that we would leave some wiggle room, certainly maybe create something a little bit more targeted for those areas, but I'd, I'd hate to miss some opportunities based on having to fit into this box.
Mayor, just to contribute to that conversation just briefly. So part of our draft policy, as Mr. Banks mentioned, is priority areas, and we have those stacked as area one and two. And so we, we could have additional priority areas, and basically the difference is the maximum amount that council is willing to consider for a tax incentive grant, right? So you could say that, you know, we have a priority in these areas of, of X percent and a priority in these areas of, of, of a lesser or a greater amount.
Okay, okay, understood. And, and what's the difference between this and, and the TIF, the Tax Incremental Finance?
There are various forms of tax increment financing. And I guess the easiest way to describe the difference is that with the TIG, the Tax Increment Grant, there's a, the, the developer is spending the money upfront to create the development, to create the new assets, and then tax, property taxes being granted back. And with a TIF, Tax Increment Financing, the municipality is typically spending the money upfront and, and basically recouping the money from the increased tax base.
All right, Councilman here. Thanks, Mayor. I'm trying to get a little clarity because I know we're going to be talking about this in, in committee soon, and I know that we have been pushing incentives in some of these lower income areas because we, and we've kind of set some priorities of what was just stated here, just presented. But give me a little bit more clarity on what you mean about how you want us to look at spreading it out, so I'll know which way we go in discussion in the committee.
Yeah, yeah, good question. So say you have a, a mixed income, you know, we have a housing shortage, or say you have a public facility, a, a convention center or something, a public business that they say, hey, we want to bring a, a deal into Fayetteville. We like the fact that you have a, a grant-back program of taxes, but I have to put it in Murchison Road, Campbellton Downtown, Massey Hill, Bonny Dune, Deep Creek Road or Seventy-First. So what I was saying was that, or Mr. Colley's recommendation, that because we do need to get some economic movement in those areas, maybe have a tiered program to say, hey, if you go to these areas, it's this. If you go to these, you know, but, but not limited participation in, in the program.
Okay, okay, okay.
That, that was the question.
Okay.
And, and the reason I said that is we, we've run into different programs that we've, they brought us incentives, down payment assistance, or housing for, for officers or city employees. And we didn't get a lot of participation because you had limitations on where you could do it at.
So according to what you gentlemen are saying, and, and Attorney Banks, that there's no legal ramification that it be in a low, moderate, it can be spread across the, the board, straight across the table?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I got you, Mayor.
Councilman Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, now I have a question, because you're basing it off of certain areas. I don't want to call them low-income areas, but you're basing it off certain areas. But the tax increment grant is based on property value. So technically, it's going to be based off the property that you have surrounding the property that they're building, correct?
Go ahead. No, sir. So, and, and to give you all a word to talk about here, these are our identified redevelopment areas. Right, so that's, that's a slightly more palatable word. But no, so the property tax increment comes from the individual property, not the surrounding. So, so if it is a, an apartment complex, for example, right, then it would be the property taxes paid by the owner of that apartment complex, not any surrounding single-family homes or anything like that.
But I thought it was based off the difference of what the value of the property would be after it was built, as Mr. Banks described.
Yes, sir. So the land is $220,000 right now, and we're getting property taxes on $220,000. After they put that $15 million apartment complex in there, it's worth a lot more.
My point exactly. So technically, whatever they're building, if somebody builds something of more value, that property is going to go up, correct?
The, the one in, in this particular property that we would be working on a development agreement with.
So it would behoove the developer to have, I don't want to call them low, but high-end businesses in that development?
The more valuable the development, the, the higher the increase in property taxes, the more the percentage grant back could potentially be. But I do, I do want to remind, since we're getting into, into the weeds a little bit there, that the grant back is only for public benefits of the development, so streets, sidewalks, things like that.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Councilmember Mahendros.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm trying to encapsulate what your, your points, because they're well-taken. I think when you expand too far out of those areas, you may have a harder time reaching the, the but-for requirement. But with that being said, I would like to accept the report and, and direct staff to move forward with the tax increment grant focusing on the redevelopment areas.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Mahendros. Seconded by Councilmember Hare in discussion. Point taken on that. I just want to make sure that as we start to look at it, we're looking 10 years down the road. We've got a growth plan, and if growth says it's going over here, we want to make sure that we've got incentives that, that are there to, to help with that. Yeah, but any questions, comments?
I have questions.
Councilmember Jensen.
With a focus on those areas. I've just left it open with a focus on the redevelopment areas.
All right. So I think that covered. All right, any other questions? All right, those in favor? All right, look forward to it, and we hope the bonds and things go well tomorrow, and this will be a lot more of an incentive for, for people to come into the city of Fayetteville.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, good to see you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Colley. All right, councils, we're moving to four point six through 12. Those are all council member request items. You know, as you know, the city council's policy for council member requests are five minutes per, at a max. Typically, it is to gain consensus to, to move something along or, or to get some coordination of, of a decision. So item four point oh six is an item that I brought back on, four point oh six, reference to ShotSpotter. Tonight, the ask of council was simply to, because this, on September 26th, this item for ShotSpotter was brought back under reconsideration. There's a motion of four by Councilmember Benevente to table the item until October 22nd work session. That motion failed four to six. There was a subsequent motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve the execution of the contract. That motion failed five to five. And so right now, it's, it's in limbo. And so council, there are a couple of items like this, kind of just needed to dispose of. The, the issue tonight, that I asked tonight, certainly couldn't debate it for five minutes. I know that I've had conversations with certain council members who had concerns with public forums and the public being able to have input. There was also conversation and recommendation from Councilmember Benevente to talk about maybe the contract terms, you know, the length of the terms and some other things. So this is just to move this, to dispose of it favorably or not, and to see if we could, if there was a consensus to move this to a next, to an upcoming meeting so that we can make a decision one way or another. Because right now, it's just in no man's land, because the two motions to dispose of it failed. And so that's why I brought it back tonight. That was the only thing, not to debate it, just to see if there was consensus to kind of move it. Okay. And then whatever happens, happens.
If I could just make a point of discussion. There was an email that one of the members sent out today. It was a very, very good point in there, in the email, where it stated that they didn't think that this was a 100%. And as I thought about, yeah, 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 as I thought about a lot of things that we do within this profession, or, or our team does in this profession, there's not always a 100%. It takes a whole lot of moving parts to work on crime initiatives, crime prevention initiatives, not just one thing works, and not just that one thing is going to be 100%. So I, I'm, I'm still up for supporting it and moving it forward to a meeting for a vote.
That, that's all the ask was tonight, but I'll go to Councilmember Benevente and then Mahendros.
I'm hoping I can dispose of my later requests related to this topic, if we can get consensus on a couple of other items. If we end up at a city council meeting with this back on the agenda, I would also like for city staff to provide us with two key pieces of detail. One, if we want to have public forums related to it, what does it look like to schedule those? My proposal is that we have two in-person, one virtual. And I had another council member say they want to see that within 30 days of us deciding whether or not to do that. Whatever the calendar looks like for staff, I want them to be able to come back to us during our regular council meeting with details of, hey, this is what that would look like. These are some dates that would actually work if you wanted to do two in-person, one virtual. The other piece is that I do want data back, because for me, it's not about having a program that's 100% perfect. That's never been my concern. My concern is that there is pros to this and there's cons to this. It could help in some ways, it could also hurt in many ways. So are we actually looking at all of the pros and the cons, especially if we've yet to hear about the cons from any of our staff? So rather than debating that now, I'll make a motion when it comes time to direct staff to, number one, come up with those dates for a public forum, and two, to look at some ways that we can amend this contract so we're actually getting data back to understand the efficacy of this program if we decide to execute the contract.
So, so thank you. And council, just so we're not debating the merits of it tonight, this is just to, to move it for disposal one way or another, and, and all of our questions and concerns at the next meeting. Councilmember Mahendros, real quick, because I'm down to 54 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just for me personally, because I see, you know, we see further down, there's another item for this. It's just kind of a moot point to have the town hall or community meetings after the, the contract's executed. So I'd like to see those prior to the execution of the contract before I feel like I can support it. Further than that, there's a couple other community-based public safety ask, as well as the Office of Community Safety ask. You know, we're talking about spending $200,000 annually for this technology. Yes, it's a tool in the toolbox, but, or on the tool belt, but that, you know, it's not guaranteed that it works. Perhaps that money's better spent on one of these other items. So if the end goal is public safety, I think we should, you know, look to focus on what will, what will have the, the most likely chance of actually making the community safe.
All right, well, I'm out of time. This is just a consensus to see if we can dispose of it. Right now, it's in a, a limbo state. So is there consensus to move this to a future meeting for disposal one way or another, either approve or against, with conditions?
Mayor Colvin, I move that we put it on the next agenda. Can we also direct staff in that motion to look at those dates and to look at some contract amendments?
Right. Where's the manager? Well, we've got enough notes that we'll pass that along to him. All right, so show of hands for that? Okay, well, all right. Thank you, council. And Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to get council support and trying to get sidewalks put on Graham Road on the Wells Place side of the street. If anybody's traveled down Rayford Road, they will see that they're putting sidewalks in from South Gate Development all the way to Seventy-First High School. They would look down Seventy-First School Road, there are sidewalks from Seventy-First High School all the way down to Remington Housing Development. I just don't understand why there are sidewalks on one side of the street and no sidewalks on the other side of the street, when we have more neighborhoods on that side of the street. We've got residents walking from Aaron Hills, walking from Asbury, walking from Wells Place, walking from Hickory Grove, all the way to Seventy-First High School in the middle of Graham Road and don't have sidewalks. So I need everyone's support.
So just had a quick question on that, Councilmember. And, you know, I know that there's a, there's a way we do sidewalks. I certainly support what you're saying. I, I think I spoke to, to a mother of, of a kid that was killed on that same area in, in the street, and I, I can't say it's attributed to that or not, but certainly support it. I, I know, I'm not sure if, what the ask is today, is it, you're saying typically with sidewalks is to review it and, and, and categorize it. So what's your ask specifically?
After talking with the city manager, first he has to make sure that all the residents will approve to have sidewalks over there and then get the funding to do it.
Okay, so Councilmember Jensen.
So I can, I can support this, but I, this is something that we have not done. You know, I've been, and I hate to play war politics here, but you know, I've been fighting for one that's down Andrews Road where there's schools too. And if it is just get a council member request and we get to be able to have sidewalks. So what I will say, because I do want to support what Councilmember Thompson is saying, what I would like to know is have staff come back and tell us around what schools that are in the city that do not have sidewalks.
Where's money for that?
So we can figure out how we can take care So we can figure out how we can take care of that. I know that we had tried to do that with the school board, with the red light camera, so that way that we can support everybody in that motion. I would, I would, if I could, um, go.
There was money through FAMPA for if you were within a mile of a school, but I don't know if that program still exists.
And, and I think that Councilmember Thompson is kind of in the same situation I am. There's a lot of donut holes, and, and so we need to just get it done.
All right. So the ask is to engage staff to come back and to see what it would look like to make sure that there's walkability around schools, specifically 71st School Road? Is that what you're saying?
And to make sure we check with the residents to make sure that they approve of us putting the sidewalks on their property.
Okay. All right. So, okay. So Councilmember Hare, Dawkins, and then Benevente.
Well, if we're going to have staff to do that work, would my councilmember be applicable to all schools?
Oh, yeah, I think that's what.
Was that?
That's what, that's what Councilwoman Jensen suggested.
Yeah. She had proposed all school, around all schools.
Okay.
Yeah. Which just made it a little less specific.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
All right. Councilmember Dawkins, Mayor Portam, you have something?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have policies on sidewalks, and we have a bond issued tomorrow on sidewalks. And to pick a specific location is, I don't think is the right way to do it, because we have staff that analyzes, we have priorities for sidewalks. Councilman Hare needs it on Philial Road. I need them around Fayetteville Technical Community College. I mean, there's, I know Councilmember Jensen needs them on the north side, so I, I can't support just picking a specific area. Now, if you say we want staff to come back with recommendations for lots of areas that we need to allocate money for, I can support that.
Yeah, that's, that's what's on the floor. It's around schools, so I think that, so that is, that is the recommendation. I know he brought this specific item for a specific place, but I think it's, it's around schools. Council, 26 seconds. Councilmember McNair? Okay. Councilmember Benevente? I'll come right. No, go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Does that include finishing up, like on 71st School Road? It stopped at a certain point, but they're still walking. I know we don't want to, you know, single out any one particular area, but however, does that include finishing up unfinished projects? Okay. I, you know, I'm not trying to be special. That's where I live.
All right. So councilors, there consensus on that item, research around schools? Yes? All right.
Can he repeat his motion so I can be clear of what's taking place?
Initial motion was for 71st School Road, but after Councilman Jensen's comments, we would try to do it around all schools. I think we set within a one-mile radius.
You said a one-mile radius?
Of, of the schools.
Of the schools.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Would you like me to clean this up a little bit?
Please.
Okay. So the Thompson motion with Jensen sucking it is that we have staff go back and look at all the schools that do not have sidewalks around them and bring that report back to us so we can look for sidewalks. At, yes, at a future meeting. Thank you.
All right. We're out of time on that item now. Real quick, Councilmember Ingram?
Yeah. So here's, here's, here's the issue that I'm taking with this item. I support your request. I wholeheartedly do. But as it relates to being able for us to go back and look at schools within one mile, about two years ago, we passed a whole walkability study. Wouldn't it not just be within that? If, especially if we are getting ready to float a bond, well, we're going to find out if our bond is, like, that's the data we're pulling from. And so in recent past, what has happened is if a councilmember wanted something specifically for a specific area, then we've said, all right, let's look within the budget, look at the next fiscal year, instead of saying, oh, well, let's open it up. We got a walkability study that tells us where the donut holes are and what the priorities are. So that's the issue that I'm taking with this item. Thank you.
And as we have to wrap it up?
Not with the item, but with, with the overall.
Understood. All right. So council, there is a walkability study you referenced that includes a master plan of connectivity that hopefully if the bonds are successful, this will be a part of that. So, but I did see a consensus of those who voted to get that information. So thank you, Councilmember Thompson. That item moves forward, and council, we stick it to the five-minute rule for all of these. Great discussion. Item 4.08, Councilmember Request, community-based public safety proposal. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone, you may recall that Mr. Akilah Sherrill came and presented a landscape analysis to us at an August meeting. And that meeting, we also accepted his report of all of the nonprofits in the area that are working towards improving public safety. And it culminated in a number of recommendations on what sort of Phase Two would look like. In September, he submitted a contract to the city manager's office that was attached to my councilmember request. My ask is that we execute that contract so that they can come and perform these 13 specific items that are going to culminate in helping to professionalize our nonprofits. One point of data that I wanted to share with everybody, and this is research from the Brennan Center, that research shows that in a city of 100,000 folks, each new nonprofit community organization will lead to a 1.2% drop in homicide rate, a 1% reduction in the violent crime rate, and a 0.7% reduction in the property crime rate. Now, imagine if we can grow the number of nonprofits that are able to operate in this community. What New Jersey has proven and what Mr. Akilah Sherrill wants to make happen here for us is that almost 30% of their 911 calls are not going to police, but rather nonprofit organizations that are better suited to respond to those calls when they're nonviolent situations. I think that there's a lot of federal, no, I don't think this, this is what he shared with me, there's a lot of federal money that is being made available towards this community-based solutions, improving public safety, that they're getting the first bite at and that we one day can also benefit from. The same way that we have contracted with the group that's helping us with the Mergers and Choice Program, by helping, by bringing some independent folks in to help us be viable for a grant opportunity from the federal government, we're receiving potentially tens of millions of dollars to improve that neighborhood. Similarly, if we bring in Akilah Sherrill's team, we can also see a lot more investment into improving our community-based organizations, and that way, our public safety infrastructure goes beyond simply relying on law enforcement to improve on these numbers. So what I'm asking today is that we do what we said we were originally, which is to accept their report, and their report included, again, Phase Two suggestions. So that's what I'm asking here for today, and I'll open myself up to any questions.
So Councilmember Benevente, I did have a couple. One, I need to check procedurally if Councilmember Request can be used to execute a contract like that without a bid process, or whatever the procedure is, because it's over $90,000. So I think there's some, some procedural issues. But two, I think, to your point, nothing is 100%. Even, even this, I think you need a little bit of everything. I mean, I'm interested to hear how elements of this can help, but I am for whatever it takes to give us a safer community to operate in. And that is from ShotSpotter to community-based investment to doorbell cameras or whatever it takes to make Fayetteville a better, safer place for people. So interested in it, kind of want to support it, but I'm afraid, I don't know if we can legally award a $300,000 ask at a councilmember request. It usually doesn't work that way, but.
Well, I'm talking about bringing it to the full council meeting to be able to do that at that point. There's certainly.
But I don't know if it's a bid required. I know $90,000 for services in RFQ, maybe the city attorney. My law license is not quite up to date. Mr. McDonald? Mr. Manager, how's that work?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as I understood it, it's a service contract, and while you could certainly execute that in that manner, we typically do seek proposals to make sure that the proposed service is consistent with what we need.
Well, to take the next steps towards executing that contract, because again, we contracted these people originally to come do a landscape analysis. So we've worked with them already. These, these aren't folks unfamiliar to us. They're not selling us anything that we didn't ask for in the first place. So I'm just asking that us as council just move on to Phase Two. And if that requires the city manager to go through that contract to see whether it's available, the best one, if he wants to compare it to some others, I'd welcome that as well.
Raise your hand. Mr. Manager raising your hand?
Yes, sir. We too were very pleased with the landscape analysis, but I would just ask council to reflect on what you've done tonight. You set us on a path to do a co-responder model for mental health. We've talked about doorbell cameras. There's continued requests for community safety cameras throughout the neighborhood. We just, we, some things from our closed session, we also talked about some modifications we're going to be making. If there's an opportunity for us to have a dedicated conversation about all the places and expansion areas that we're going in at your retreat, I think that would help staff have a better understanding of where we would put our emphasis. The good thing about the contract, though, as contemplated, is that it would bring with it some additional resources. But in the middle of doing the recruitment for the police chief and some other high-level vacancies that we have going on, we're just asked that you be mindful of all that we're doing in the public safety arena at the moment, and if this could be something that we could have a dedicated conversation about as among all the other elements of things that we're doing in the public safety arena, particularly if, when we wake up tomorrow on Wednesday morning and our $60 million public safety bonds have passed as well. It's, it's a lot.
All right. So I think we need to have that dedicated conversation as it relates to this Phase Two of the landscape analysis.
All right. So that's the ask. Council?
Miss, can you repeat that? The mayor was kind of talking over. I couldn't hear.
Let me just clarify again. As the city manager mentioned, I move that we proceed.
She's so cute.
I move that we proceed with making this a dedicated conversation as it relates to the Phase Two recommendations made in the landscape analysis.
All right. All right. Those in favor? Show of hands. Yeah. Yeah. Right, right. It was clear. So we'll, we'll be back once staff presents. All right. All right, council, moving forward to 4.010. Councilmember Benevente, your item, didn't we kind of address that during the first part of it, the public forum stuff?
No, sir. Right now, we're on the Office of Public Safety 4.09.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. 4.09.
So the city manager sort of mentioned this very briefly. When we're talking about the crisis response team, when we're talking about the mini-grants that we're already providing people, when we're talking about the PROVE project and some of the other work that we're doing to improve on public safety, I think it's high time that we start doing what other communities are doing, just like in Durham, just like in Raleigh, just like in Greensboro, where they have a dedicated Office of Public Safety. Now, the importance of this is that we already recognize that the police department can't do everything, and in fact, they may not be best suited to do all of these issues, all the, to address all the issues that we have in our community. We need someone who's dedicated to looking at all of the gaps in the ways that we operate, not just when it comes to law enforcement, but as it relates to public safety writ large. We've already talked about being proactive on issues. Right now, the police can only respond after a law is broken or after our victim has already sort of come into contact with whatever issue there is. An Office of Public Safety would be able to do a lot more proactive work ahead of time. And we saw it, you know, listed in the Durham example, that they have a 15-person department that helps to execute all of these crisis response teams and execute all of these different subgroups that are able to go into the community and help on all these issues. So I think it's important that we start looking in that direction. The city manager and the police department have already sort of alluded to this is the way that these types of crisis response teams operate. They don't just sort of exist on their own. They exist underneath a department that can respond to the city manager's request for information. And I think most importantly, have a component of independent oversight incorporated into their abilities. So in Greensboro, Councilmember Banks McLoughlin has already been in contact in the past with the person that's in charge of their office there. She mentioned talking with the Fayetteville Police Department as well back in 2020 as it relates to how exactly, whenever there's instances of police misconduct, can an office within the city still respond to these issues without necessarily having to worry about the politics that come with, that impact the entire police department when accountability measures are necessary. So I believe this is the direction that we ought to go to. I think it's the direction that we've already heard alluded to by our city manager, that if we want to have a crisis response, if we want to start approaching the public safety issues of our day more proactively, that we do that with an independent department, something like a public safety department, which is what I'm asking for us to start looking at how to implement one today.
Question, question on that. Now, the manager talked earlier on some changes that were being made and of, you know, kind of a separate and apart staff member to handle complaints and that kind of thing. So how does that relate to what you're asking?
So whether it just being a staff member, I'm talking about us having a dedicated sort of department chief or department head that can then have a staff. Because when it comes to issues of police policy, when it comes to issues of improving public safety, we need someone dedicated to those issues. Us individual councilmembers sort of doing research here and there, making it a councilmember request, we're sort of always reacting to stuff. The way they have it in Greensboro is they have an attorney who spends 40 hours a week making sure that they're not having these issues. Because the way she explained it to me is that oversight happens one way or the other. It happens because you're going to get a lawsuit. Oversight happens when you got demonstrators in the street. Oversight's going to happen to you one way, whether you like it or not. The question is whether you want to be proactive about dealing with these issues of public safety. And that's the difference that I'm hoping that we can make here tonight, is we start moving in that direction, we open up a department of public safety, separate and apart from the police department.
All right. So council, the ask is to ask if there's consensus, staff to create a separate department to address those concerns. I support the concept of a second person. I don't know if it needs an entire department at this time, so I may not be able to support that. It's not that I don't support the theory of it, but I think we have to start somewhere. I do think a staff member or two with focus on it is probably a good idea. So any other questions? Councilmember Ingram?
Yes. Seeing that we just made a vote to follow the recommendations coming from the landscape analysis, I know that city manager may mention of some new personnel that may be coming on board to work under him. I wanted to see, does this, is that following under the recommendations that you are asking? Or?
It does. It sounds like the city manager may be already moving in that direction, which is great. I want us to go ahead and make the ask now to say, look at it from two different directions, if it's just a couple of members of staff or whether it's this whole department, let's look at both then, and we'll have an option to vote on it in the full meeting.
Thank you.
All right. So council, five minutes is up. Consensus to move that item? Show of hands? All right. One, two. Okay. All right. Yep. Five, five. Madam Clerk. Did you need names? All right. Those, those in favor was Councilmember Mahndros, Benevente, Banks McLoughlin, McNair, and Ingram. All right. Item 4.010. That was the item I spoke to about public forum. You had already talked about that, right?
I'll take a moment, just of these five minutes, to say that to Councilmember Thompson, Hare, Council, Mayor Portam, Councilmember Jensen, Mayor, Mayor Colvin, we just talked about all of these things need to be housed somewhere. The fact that you guys can say that you understand all that and still vote against moving in that direction is, I'm a gog.
Yeah. Well, that, that item is passed. I think, as I said, that it could be support for information about personnel doing certain things, but as presented, but I still support it.
That's how it goes around this table. It's not always support for every item that we feel that should move forward within ourselves. I had an item. No movement at all. So it, it happens like that sometimes. But to call the, to go around and call your members out of the same ones you're going to be calling on at another date.
It's counterintuitive for you to say yes to this and no to that.
Well, 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 council, I think we've, we've moved past it. I don't think one is to the exclusion of the other. Councilmember Request started getting consensus for more information. Councilmember requests started getting consensus for more information from staff. So it's not necessarily saying that, you know, that it's gone forever, but this was tonight's motion was to get more information. And again, there was a long list of public safety items that we've got support and they're engaged in bringing back. So this is a continued effort. So don't, let's not get too far down the path on that. Councilmember Benavente, on the public forum, I think we talked about that as a part of the criteria for the shot spotter.
What, we're on 4.11, sir?
No, we were on 4.010, but we certainly, I think we need to be on 4.11.
4.11, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. 4.11, sir.
Mayor Colvin, I appreciate you allowing for Mr. Haddock to prepare a little bit of a presentation during this five minutes. I know that's not typical, but we'll just utilize half the time for him to present and then the rest for the council to speak.
We don't want to be pushy, but this is the five-minute window, so we're going to give it to you right away and then back to him to ask whatever his ass is.
Yes, sir. All right. So just quickly, the presentation I have is just going through to talk about the Archie Beebe Community Remembrance Project. That particular project is actually, we went before the Human Relations Commission back in August and they voted in September to kind of support. And actually, the director is actually here with us this evening as well. If I just quickly look, what is the Community Remembrance Project? It's of course, it's a nationwide program with the Equal Justice Initiative, which you all probably have heard of Brian Stevenson and the movie Just Mercy and all that was kind of about his his efforts to kind of memorialize and document the victims of racial violence and foster meaningful dialogue about race injustice. He was working hard to get people off death row who may have been convicted unjustly. What's the Archie Beebe Community Remembrance Project Coalition? We actually have, being endorsed by the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission, the River Jordan Council, Organizing Against Racism, Cumberland County, and the direct descendants of the lynching victim Archie Beebe himself. The family is deeply involved in the project as well. They have been attending mostly everything that they could. They could not be here tonight, but they may be here next week. They matriarched the mother of the kind of head for the family in terms of organizing this effort. Just kind of quickly, Archie's records are on, can be found actually at a red record, which is a site that got established by the UNC system, some graduate students a while back. He's the 25th name on a list of 174 that are lynched in the state of North Carolina. The description of his particular effort, his particular lynching is actually on that particular site. But of course, there's some minor things that are needed to be adjusted. We do actually know who the shooter was. And of course, it was Elvena or Elvina. I'm not sure of the pronunciation. Massey was the person he was accused of attempting having raped. There is, of course, the idea that, you know, we're trying to look at a notion of how lawlessness actually works. It doesn't seem to ever fade away. It always seeks to take control in terms of political power and so forth and make itself a legal standard. If you look at the article to the side, and you all have this, so you can read it at your leisure, but there was a Fayetteville Observer article back in 1898, and this is following Archie Beebe's 1867 lynching murder. And by the time we get to 1898, there is a total coup in Wilmington taking place in which they actually had the guns to the head of the existing mayor and other elected officials and took those people out of office in Wilmington. So Beebe, I'm not going to go through any of this. You all have it in writing because I know it's a five-minute limit. So what we're really looking for is we had the vote and they, in terms of the Human Relations Commission, actually sought to to assist us with a marker at the Gillespie and Person Street corners of the market house. And then assisting also with a letter of endorsement for the project from the mayor and the city, either or. And then also, there should be a jar of soil which should be collected along with that for the Legacy Museum. And then we're still seeking to, we've worked with the archives, the state archives, to try to find any evidence we can about where his remains might be. So we're kind of in pursuit of that. So the HRC has agreed to assist with as much as they can with that as well. Tonight, we're asking of you for a permanent marker at the, from the EJI Community Remembrance Project at the corner of Gillespie and Person Street. Now, this permanent marker is, will be provided by the Equal Justice Initiative. There's a sample of it in terms of what it looks like down there in the lower left-hand corner. And the jar of soil will also go into the Legacy Museum if we can get some assistance in that regard as well. Thank you.
So I'll ask that we make that permanent marker available and then the direct staff to find out the cost, things associated.
All right. So the ask is if there's consensus for staff to come back with the specifics about cost. Did you, did you say this was an application for a grant?
The Justice Initiative, they will actually provide the marker.
They pay for it financially?
Yeah, they do the markers themselves. So it will not be a cost that we have to incur.
Okay.
Just the location. That's the location that I have on, well, it's on your screens. It should be.
Okay. Councilmember Mahandros?
Couple of quick questions. Is there a reason why it's that intersection Gillespie and Person versus Green and Person, for example? Just curious.
That's where the actual shooting took place and it was in that corner, stepping off of that southeast corner of the market house.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then the second question, I heard that HRC was involved. What was their part in this?
Just as they were actually, they said they would assist with the jar of soil, which is a sample that's collected there. They'll assist also with helping us to identify any remains. His body was exhumed, but we don't presently know where his, you know, where he was put to rest, so.
Wow.
Yeah. Have they formally, has HRC formally voted on this? I know you presented to them.
Yes, they voted on it September 22nd.
To support this?
For everything that's listed. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I just, I will, as we have this conversation, I can recognize that there may be many more conversations that will come to us surrounding this. And if you hear, and I'm just saying this because it came up, if you hear somebody saying, well, the HRC, this may be before some of the new council members' time, but we tasked the HRC to do a great amount of work surrounding the market house. And a lot of that information, what came back was to be able to tell the truth of stories that are happening. So what you are seeing now is us moving that forward and making effort to do what the HRC presented to us and making that partnership with our community partners.
All right. Council, any other questions, comments? All right. Our five-minute window is up. Those in favor of? Consensus to ask staff to work? Yeah. Well, all things are unofficial tonight, but this is consensus to get the information and the process together. I think there was some letter recommendations. They're going to get details about the process, that kind of thing, if it's supported.
And we do want that particular corner to be because of the uniqueness of what happened.
Right, right, right. We understand it has some relevance to the historical story. Okay. All right. Okay. So council, those in favor are unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right.
One of our, one of our members, Lisa Greathouse, actually had visited the museum and she actually brought a couple of books back and she wanted to.
That's the Peace and Justice Museum?
Yes.
I'd be loved to see that. Okay.
And this is for you, Mr. Mayor, if you actually want, but the whole council has an opportunity to kind of review it.
Okay. If you give it to the clerk. And thank you for that. Thank you, John, and all your team down there. Thank you. All right. Councilmember, item 4.012. Again, council, this was just a way to get something out of the, oh, Councilmember Ingram?
Oh, go ahead and finish. I just wanted to line my question up.
Okay. All right. September 12th of this year, Councilmember Ingram moved to delay the appointment of PWC Commissioner. And the motion passed six to four. There was, there was no date certain, so this is again, another limbo. And council, one way or another, I think that we need to dispose of it. So this is kind of in no man's land, so if it doesn't get revisited, then it's there. So the ask tonight, not to debate it, I think there was a talking to councilmember Jensen and some of the others. You know, there was some interest in maybe using the process we used the last time, if there were a couple of interested candidates to to have them come in and interview with council. But this is basically to get it back on the radar to make a decision one way or another for disposal. So that is the ask tonight that comes for a future meeting. There was no date certain given in the action taken on the 12th. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sent an email earlier asking a question. I did not get a response. But as you've alluded to, that you apparently spoken to some other council members and I'm seeing that those mentioned are shaking their heads and saying that they have not been spoken to. I specifically stated when I initially led, requested the delay, that there were some things that were in question and also in limbo as it relates to the process of how we went about the PWC appointment. And what I want clarity for is, are we moving away from the process that we implemented, that you asked the council to implement and we did? Because if you want to put this back on the, on the agenda, I have no problem with that. But what I think also needs to happen is that we have to set a, set a time for interviews because that is a part of the process. So if that's going to be your question, then that needs to be included within your motion.
Well, I can't make a motion because I'm chairing it, but that is a great discussion for if this passes to be discussed. And certainly, process is a part of the conversation for sure. So the ask tonight was just to move it along and get it out of the limbo stage. Councilmember Hare?
Yes, sir. Just for clarity for myself, I do remember that we had the interviews and we had folk to come in and I thought we were doing that particular process at that time because we weren't moving. I think it was, it may have been 5-5, but it wasn't moving. If staff can tell me, our legal team can tell me, did we make that policy? Because just for clarity, so I will understand that we do interviews.
There was no policy. I think it's reference to precedent. And just the last time was different because you had two applicants that came forward and that's the process we used. But it didn't mean that it was, I don't remember it becoming a formal policy, but.
Okay. For clarity for me. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to go back to what we were talking about, first of all, I will support bringing it back to talk about it because we do, I mean, the boards and commissions needs, we need to get this through. I will go with councilmember Ingram to say she is correct that we sat here and talked about that we were going to have interviews with the PWC and it was supposed to go back to the boards and commissions to, I guess, make that policy. Now, whether that has changed or not, because I'm not on the boards and commission anymore, I don't know if that was talked about in the meeting. But councilmember Ingram is correct that we did talk about that. But I will also say that we need to bring it back and we need to do the, have the people come so the whole council can talk about PWC because that's what we have talked about for the past two times that we've done this.
Okay. Because you said like two things. Are you saying to do the interviews? Or are you saying just to bring the subject matter back? Because I'm just.
So what I would say is that the boards and commission, it.
The appointments committee?
Appointment, the boards and commission's appointment committee. Yes, sir. I apologize.
We never discussed it.
So it needs to be discussed. It needs to come back. And I would say, my personal opinion is it needs to go back to boards and commissions. You need to bring it back.
So it sounds good. The purpose tonight was to get consensus to move it along. So all of these are great ideas, but that's all we're trying to accomplish tonight. And so I say we've got to.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
All right. So let me go to councilmember Banks McLaughlin and Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. So if this pass as far as it coming back, is this something that's been, it is opening back up? Or we're going off of the individuals that put in for the application? Because that makes the difference. Because I was going to say it's unfair to have had a list of individuals who we voted on or that was recommended and then open it back up to the public.
No, I agree with you. I think, I wouldn't imagine opening it back up because again, it wouldn't have been fair for those who abided by the deadline. But all the things that y'all have talked about certainly are good ideas, whether it's interviews or however we get there. I just want to move it. So, councilmember Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. Because me particularly have been told over and over and over again that new council don't have to agree to what old council did. So why are we going backwards when we have a new council?
All good points. The only ask tonight is that this comes up in a future meeting for some action to, or some recommendation. Councilmember?
For that consensus, Mayor.
Okay. Well, my five minutes are up. I'm going to let y'all put in another request for that. This is just to move it to the next, to the next meeting.
Hey, Mayor, I'll make a motion that, for consensus, that we move this to a city council meeting, a next city council meeting. That's the 14th now. That's next week.
And then council, whatever recommendations we have to give staff, put it under administrative reports, Mr. Manager, so it's not an actionable item at the next meeting? Or would it be the next work session? Well, I think boards and commissions made a, who's the chair of that?
Right here. But the thing about it.
I think board and commissions made their recommendation.
We brought it already.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. The motion by, I believe, councilmember Banks McLaughlin was to delay the vote. City Attorney, because I recall, whoever made the motion, it was to delay the appointment, right? City Attorney, because councilmember Banks McLaughlin then made a motion to nominate someone to be voted on specifically. And you said when I was running the meeting that that motion was out of order because she just voted to delay. So now all we have done is delay the vote on the PWC Commissioner. Is that your understanding, City Attorney?
As I recall, councilmember Ingram actually made the motion and it was to delay.
Thank you.
I don't recall that there was a specific timeframe attached to her request.
You're exactly correct.
So I believe what the mayor is trying to do, given that there was no specific timeframe or the proposal on the table, is to bring it back as a result of that.
Right. So the ask, all of these ideas are great. The ask is simply just to schedule it for a future future council member meeting where the full council can then work through.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. I just want to make sure I'm very clear that we are not moving forward with interviewing the PWC appointments. Because I mean, I'm just going to be very honest, the way the lay of the land is right now, that doesn't look like that's what's going to happen. So I just want to make sure I'm extremely clear on what we are doing.
The clarity for tonight, I can't speak for what the future actions will be, but tonight's ask is to get it on a future meeting for the council to discuss. That's it. So is consensus for that so that we can?
For the 14th, sir.
Yeah. The 14th is fine or another date, guys. We could call it special meeting or however. It's just a future date, so it's back on the radar. Because right now, it's not.
14th.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. Counsel, counsel. Future meeting, let's say the 14th. And then we can decide next steps. Is that good? All right. Show of hands on. All right. Councilmember Benavente had a.
Just a brief point of personal privilege. My apologies to my colleagues. Public safety is a big issue for me. I think my activist hat fell on by accident for a moment there, so I just want to beg the forgiveness of my colleagues for the outburst. Thank you.
That apology accepted, man. And we love your passion for it. Yeah. Have a good night.